Okay, it is now 6:30. Welcome. Welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on February 15th, 2022. We will have a workshop in front of our regular scheduled meeting. The workshop is mainly for the council to discuss things at length, and there is no town citizens' input on that, but we are recording that as well. We welcome you and do want you to feel heard, valued, and informed, connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Councilmember, excuse me, Secretary Caroline, will you go ahead and take roll call?
Councilmember Ryan Vincent.
Present.
Councilmember Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Simeon White, not here. Mayor Tara Sinkovich.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Jaffe.
Here.
And Councilmember Tom Anderson.
Here.
Okay, and quorum is confirmed. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, led by Councilmember Jaffe.
Test, test. Okay, join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Join me in prayer by your heads, please. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for this beautiful weather. Thank you for this wonderful town that we all live in. I pray that you would bless our time together tonight, and I pray that we would glorify you in all of our interactions. I know that we have differences, Lord, both sitting up here at this table and also out in the audience, but I just pray that we would see each other's heart and work together in the spirit of cooperation and just building our great little town. Pray all these things in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, so we are opening up for our workshop agenda. If you would like a packet, there is one here over on the table, and it does have everything that we have, or nearly everything. Number one, discuss implementation of the Emergency Management Services and NIMS courses. Here's Simeon.
Glad you could hear about that.
We just started number one of workshop.
So Tara, last time, we had our person that was sort of guiding us through some of this. I guess we've taken our courses, right, that we're required to take. I know I have. I finally finished them.
I think everyone has finished. I know. Is that right, Caroline? They've all turned them in? Okay.
And that was a state-required or a federal-required thing that we had to take those?
Well, it's a FEMA courses. These, in order to get FEMA money, they expect all of the council and our staff to have completed four of the courses. So I will, Councilmember Fowler and I were on a meeting today around 1:00 with Richard Hill, the Emergency Management Director. I'm not sure what the exact title is, for Hunt, for Hunt County. We were on a conference call with David Jones. He writes the plans, David Alexander, and then Richard Hill, of course. So five of us were on a conference call for about, well, it was 49 minutes. And I wanted to get his take on things because he was not at our last meeting. We heard from Steve Huey of Kaufman County, and I've been getting different takes on how this is all supposed to work, being a municipality that's spread into counties. So Richard said that they have four different cities that they service, Roy City, Josephine, Leonard, and Cumbi, which are also divided in at least two or three different counties. And he says they've never had this question come up as to where the paperwork is supposed to originate from. So, and that was the same response. It was there scratching their head when I called TML Attorney and talked with Amber. They had never had that question. So he just basically said, it is very simple. You have three choices. One, you can make up your own emergency management protocol. Mind you, there, you know, Kaufman County's is 1,800 pages, Hunt County's three inches. And I think that this council would agree that we may not want to do that. So we're not the experts. They are. But that is a choice. He said that Greenville has done that. But the problem with that is you have to update it every five years, and it's very time-consuming. And so what he also, then he said you can either choose Hunt County's protocol or Kaufman County's protocol, or you can divide it. Is that what your understanding is, Terry? So I think it's important to hear all the views because I was getting, you know, after talking with Steve and then talking with TML Attorney and then talking with Richard, we were getting different perspectives on it. So we are here to talk about that very thing. Richard did say he could drop by, since theirs is three inches thick, he would drop by a zip drive, and then we can distribute that. I may have to make copies for each of you. And then we can look at Hunt County's protocol, and then we can also, I think Tom and I are to meet with Steve Huey and look at the Emergency Operations Center there in Kaufman County on Monday. We just found out today that we solidified a date and time for that. So we'll be taking a tour of that facility, and then at the same time, getting Kaufman County's 1,800 pages digitally. So we can also distribute that. So we'll have lots of homework as a council to look at those things. And I don't know that we can really digest that here tonight, especially not having, but that is, that is in the works, so.
So I thought I heard Steve say at the last meeting that we needed to belong to one of the counties that we are in, and that right now he felt like we were in Kaufman, that he would run things. Is that what others heard?
Yeah, that's what I heard as well. I don't necessarily agree with him.
Terry, do you want to address that?
I asked Richard Hill that question. So Steve Huey's comment, paraphrasing, was he thought that because our town hall would more than likely be in Kaufman County, that it would behoove us to do that. But both of them agree. I've talked to Steve Huey away from these meetings, and both of them agree that if the natural disaster happens, that they're both still going to participate. It's just who we're following our paperwork through.
Okay. Well, I don't have any issue with Steve. I just wanted, we're kind of unique to some cities in that we're in three different counties, two now and three someday. So, you know, we have that arrangement. I think most cities probably don't have that. They just go to whatever county.
So Hunt County has, she mentioned they have four cities currently. So they're familiar with that at least.
Right. To reiterate, Roy City has three counties. They work with, Josephine has two, Leonard has two, and Cumbi has two. And there's one, Windsboro, has four. It's not in their jurisdiction, but they have four counties. And they just divided along county lines, and you've apparently, we've done this for decades, right, where if it's in Hunt County, you follow Hunt County's protocol. If it's in Kaufman County, you follow Kaufman County's protocol. I'm not sure that it would be any advantage to change that. I think the opposite might be true.
Kind of the purpose of the NIMS courses, though, is to have a standardized response structure, federal, you know, across the entire country. So, I mean, they're going to follow the same ICS. They're going to follow that same structure. So then, who gets the credit for responding? As long as our folks are getting the service they need, then I don't care.
Now, he did say that, we did ask that question, I don't remember if myself or Terry, what is the difference? Basically, there's a few differences. One is the public notice system. Is it through, but they're both in the NCCOG, the COG. They're also, he said, there's an advanced streamlined, of course, he's going to promote.
For those who weren't on the call, what is the NCCOG?
NCT.
Oh, NCT.
North, central.
North Central Texas, something of government.
Council of Governments, yeah. So he said regardless of where it falls, if the incident occurs in Kaufman, or in Kaufman County, they would get county funds for those inhabitants. If it's in Hunt County, they would get the money for those inhabitants. So, and he did say there was a state law that was passed a few years back that really benefited the smaller towns. He says it allows the disaster money to go to each area without a formal MOU. So you don't have to do those necessarily. It just, it happens. And they do work in, you know, teamwork, and so it's good to see that, but.
Well, I think we also do have some things to consider for which is primary, like if there is a cross-county disaster, like a tornado, you know, tornadoes come through and rip across both counties, and there's EOCs formed in both Hunt and Kaufman, you can only be in one or the other. I mean, they might be working together, but you can only be, yeah, between the two counties.
It'll only be one EOC, and that'll be driven more than likely by the first responders. They're going to start ramping up their command structure. And at some point, when they can tolerate more than their staffing, that calls made to the emergency managers and whoever, and they will set up the EOC. And Steve Huey and Richard Hill, doesn't matter who we pick, will participate in that if it's both counties that's involved.
And we did ask that question. If there was an incident that crossed both county lines, how would that fall? And I think what Terry, if I understand what Terry was saying is, you know, of course, we know from the NIMS courses, whoever's the first on the scene is the incident commander, and then they figure out who is the EOC. And he said they divide it all the time, and that it's kind of a well-oiled machine from what I understand. And so he was actually very confused by the question is, why would you even?
It's not. It might appear that way.
It might appear that way. So the layperson, they have his fault, right? But so he said that, you know, this is, this question hasn't really come up, and that's what the TML Attorney was confused about, too. It really hadn't come up because there are certainly numerous towns who have multiple counties. And so that's the way they usually cross county lines. So for instance, Kaufman County would handle Kaufman County, Hunt County would handle Hunt County. And so I guess, but we do have to, I guess, vote in as a council which plan and how we were going to do that. So until we can look at those 1,800 pages plus, I don't know that we can really make that determination.
So I had one takeaway from our meeting, and I don't know if you had the same takeaway. So Steve Huey, well, so I guess this is insider knowledge, and I mentioned in our meeting, and I'll have to confirm it. I believe in Kaufman County, cities that title Steve Huey as their emergency manager and coordinator pay a fee to the county. So, i.e., Terrell used to use Steve Huey as their emergency manager coordinator, and he's also the emergency manager of Kaufman County. So that option's out there, and I'll confirm that with him. Hunt County, Richard Hill says they don't charge for that. So if Tara wants to stay the emergency manager coordinator, she has every right to, but in the future, if another mayor says, I don't feel comfortable with being the coordinator, what's our options? Well, I feel like if we're aligned with Hunt County at that time, it's going to be easier to say, Hunt County, do you want to be our coordinator? And does that still come at no cost? But I'll confirm that with Steve Huey. But that is, that's a pretty big takeaway when we're talking about a town with limited resources.
Something else that really stood out to me whenever he was here is he said in order for us to participate in the EOC, that we're going to need NIMS 300 and 400. It was my understanding as well. And he suggested the mayor and mayor pro temp get those trainings. And I'd be interested to see when that opportunity arises because we can't, we can't know for sure when the next emergency will be, right? And I'd rather Poetry.
That 300 class happened during the ice storm.
300 or 300, 400.
Yeah. I know he said the 400 or 300 was more helpful than the 400.
I have a note that Wayne, you told us that. Do you remember? Saying that we should take the, the mayor and pro temp should take the 300 and 400 course?
All departments would be achieved, but any department if you happen to have 300 and more. 400 is more, kind of like when the Katrina passed, it is more of a bigger scale, which is more often than chose for the joint commanders to be, say, Steve on this side and your own Hunt County side. There'll be a joint command working together. But the 300, 400, the 400 is just more detail.
So my understanding was that 300 was more hands-on. Is that correct?
It was more hands-on.
Okay. So like in the CERT training we did, it was more hands-on activities, not just bookwork and multiple choice.
You have to do scenarios, live you up into groups, each person being responsible for a task, and you're given a scenario of a disaster case, and we have to delegate.
That was like the CERT training I went through. Okay, so the 300 happened during the ice storm. So it was in El Paso. So I missed that one.
You can, you can, you can.
What was that name again?
KEMEFLAN, TEEX instructions.
Okay. If you could get that information, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
TEEX, T-E-E-X, Texas A&amp;M Extension Office, that TEEX.
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, sure.
Chief, so help me on the county level because city level and county level is going to be a little bit different. Just so we're clear up here, any council member in an EOC, a fully-evolved EOC, any council member up here, be it the mayor, the pro temp, myself or anybody, our role in that EOC will not be critical thinking as far as management. Ours would be logistics, I mean, planning.
Your role will mainly be notifying the public.
Okay. I mean, which is an important role in the EOC.
Yes, that way it keeps.
But I just want to make sure everybody up here doesn't think that we're going to go in there and say, well, deploy two fire trucks to the west side of town. That's not our job as a council.
No, no, no.
Well, and Terry Vensicle, I asked him that question, and he said, well, it's to make the financial decisions.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. It won't take them long to go through our finances.
All right. So any other discussion by the council on this matter?
So to back up, I think to something Brian said, so if we do nothing, and I'm not proposing that, but if we do nothing and a disaster rolls through here tomorrow, our citizens, including ourselves, are covered, right? People are going to swarm in and do things, and things are going to happen, and people can apply for disaster money or whatever. I guess I'm just trying to understand, as we think about going through three or four inches of paper, sort of, I'm not saying we don't do this or get involved because we're already kind of in, but what's, we don't want to mess it up. We don't want to take on more than we can handle right now.
So, good question. So we're covered as far as them coming out and taking care of us, but we're not covered as far as reimbursement by FEMA. So we need to have that solidified in the form of, are we going to adopt Kaufman or Hunt, or are we going to make our own system, protocol? We have to, at least in our, we have an ordinance on emergency management, so I think we will have to tweak it and assign either Kaufman County or Hunt County or divided upon the line. So you have to designate which protocol you're going to adopt as yours.
And so the reimbursement is to who? It's to the city? So if the city goes out and rents equipment to rescue people or something? Or is it for citizens to get money back for damaged fences and tractors?
FEMA will, if there's an emergency disaster that is declared a national emergency, FEMA will reimburse citizens for a lot of stuff. They'll also give loans. You need to make sure that you understand if it's a loan or if it's a grant, because I've got people who get sideways there. You also have the Red Cross who will show up. They'll guide people through the paperwork and everything. That was part of the response that I was involved in. So, I mean, there's a lot of agencies who will come out and respond and then guide us through the aftermath of the disaster. So, you know, if it happened tomorrow before we have all of our ducks in a row, we still have people that are going to come and help.
Well, I guess I'd say, I would, actually, Simeon and I both raised this issue, is after the course is what now? And I think we're learning a little bit, partly with the phone calls that you had today and then more next weekend. I think this is going to be an evolution as to what do we do. Now, I'm not as concerned about getting money as I am of something like a major fire with a high wind, like what happened in Colorado recently out near Boulder. You know, something like that could come in, and it isn't like a tornado that's over in a few minutes. That can go on for a long time. And in that case, what do we do? And I don't, myself, I'm not sure now, but hopefully within the next few weeks, a few months, we do know what to do. But I admit, we're just learning.
So we're in the counties, and we're covered in those counties. And if you look at that map, some of our biggest hurdles is our friend in this. So all those areas that aren't highlighted are the county, and those guys are still going to respond, and they don't stop at that highlighted line because we don't have an agreement with them. So in the case of emergency and the wildfires and all that, all that's going to be ramped up, and they're not going to stop just because Poetry hasn't signed an agreement with either county yet.
So I'm hearing there's not a sense of urgency, like we need to have extra meetings and all of that to get this done. We need to kind of pace ourselves to make sure that we understand what we're getting into. And in the meantime, we're being backstopped by the normal processes and support organizations.
Right. As far as the NIMS courses go, I believe the intent of the state telling us that we need the NIMS courses is so that we understand what is going on around us. While the people who are trained to respond, actually respond. So I think Tara and Tom, you guys are planning on taking the 300, 400, right, so you can be in the knock. The rest of us need to step back and let the people who are trained to respond do their thing, not get in their way. That's going to be the biggest help that we can provide, is staying out of the way of the people who know what they're doing. But the NIMS courses, again, we know what the incident command structure is, the ICS, so that if we have to talk to somebody, we know to start with the lowest rung and work our way up, but don't go to the incident commander, that kind of thing. So I think that you're right in your assessment. This isn't something necessarily that we have to completely solve for today. I think we'll build into that knowledge and, you know, we'll have the emergency response stuff. And by the way, for those of you out there, emergency response and stuff, this is like a hobby for me. This is stuff that, all of these courses that everybody else is complaining about, I have 35 certifications in it, and I did it 12 years ago and on my own dime, on my own time, because that's, I love it. And I'm still saying, yeah, we probably don't need to get all riled up and worry about it too much. We have trained professionals out here that we probably could not pay to stay away from an emergency.
And I think, too, it's, you know, I appreciate Terry's experience in this area. He lives this weakly bestest in his role as a firefighter, but also Wayne and others that we have sort of as subject matter experts. And I hope that as we go forward, we'll continue to talk with those folks to get their opinion. I mean, I appreciate Steve's comments from last week. He's sort of a subject matter expert, but these guys are sort of in there too, and may be able to give us some good advice. And my encouragement to the council is that we reach in, you know, reach over to Terry and to Wayne and others. Yes, sir.
In response to his question about large grass fire, all the departments, I'm not sure if I talked to counties, but our side, Texas Department of Customs and Service just won't call away. We call them to bring out tractor, floor, rear equipment, and bring out air support, so not unusual.
Okay. Let that not be an encouragement to be burning right now because that would be a bad idea. We don't need fires.
I think we have a burn ban right now, don't we?
Not in Hunt County.
Not in Hunt?
The fire, I just read the report from, I guess, the college report that we just got, is saying there was 40, there was actually a number of fires over the average. So we're over average on fires in February so far. So the winds.
No ban, but still not a wise idea.
No ban, but it's not a go.
So Tara, wrap this one up. What is the next step on the NIMS stuff? What's the next thing we're going to do?
Well, I think we've stated it, that we could, in summary, we could just say, basically, Tom and I need to probably get the 300 and 400 classes in our belt. We'll be getting the digital doc copies of the protocol from each county so that the council can look at those. And then I do think we need to certainly digest that and make a decision at some point. I think the emergency management coordinators for each county would say, yes, you need to do it yesterday, but have done it yesterday, but I know it will take some time for us to digest all the hundreds of pages. So, and compare and contrast, certainly. So for now, until we get those to each of you, I think we'll just have to revisit this at another time.
Yeah, well, I guess I'd add, I think it's incumbent on us, whoever learns is to routinely in these meetings have a, what did we learn from the meetings or from whatever exercises of 300 and 400. So I do think there's a reporting back to the full council about what we learned. In other words, we don't know what's going to happen over time. So it could be you and I are gone and somebody else is doing it, and so we need to report back, and I think we will. And I guess I'd say, having been through four hurricanes and lots of refinery fires, I realize the chaotic nature of both of them, and I can appreciate the need, as Brian said, for having an organization, because once something major happens, it's too late to start learning. We need to put things in gear quickly. And that's the one thing I would say. And so I think it's incumbent on all of us to learn, what do we need to do if we have a major incident occur?
Well, and I think, too, to that point, Tom, if you would help us and Terry and others understand as council members, you know, sort of what we might expect our responsibility to be so we can make sure that we're tuned up on it. I mean, I took the class, but I can tell you I've probably already forgotten half of what I learned because I just don't live in that world. I mean, I understand it and I appreciate it. I value the structure and the discipline, but I don't live in that world. So, but I do want to know what we as council members need to be prepared to do in the event of something horrific.
Agreed.
Well, I do know that in case of an emergency, you need to be by your phones because there's a one-hour notification that we might have to convene and have an emergency council meeting. So I do know that would be something in case of, that we, there might be decisions that we have to make as a council. So that would be very important to definitely keep your phone charged and be ready on the fly to, there's a one-hour notification for emergency council meetings in case of an emergency. So any other, any other discussion on that one? Can we move on? Okay. So number two, discuss obtaining storm sirens for the town, including pursuing public grants. So I know we had had this on the previous agenda, and I've since then was doing some research. May 3rd of 1890, the Methodist Church and School were blown away by a tornado right here in Poetry, Texas. So although that's not our, not a pleasant thought, it did happen. And then I've been looking at the ratio of tornado information for Roy City, Texas. It is, Roy City was the nearest town, city to us that had any data. They are in a high-risk level. Their yearly average of tornadoes is two. They have had since 1950, 155 tornadoes. They have had since 1950, 155 tornadoes. So, that's quite a few. And then I was looking at the historical statistics, again, for Roy City. Injured in 2015 was 119, and then there was 468 injured that same year. There's been fatality, let's see, deaths, there was 10 in 2015, and there have been numerous incidences, and not to, not that we want to dwell on that and the negative, but we do need to be aware that we are in a, kind of a high-risk for tornado activity, and therefore, I do want to be proactive. I don't want to just, you know, sit back and say, oh, we're good, you know? I want us to be proactive and think about it, you know? Let's really digest that. I did reach out to this storm sirens company and asked them to give me a list of cities that have the report-back system with no maintenance. So, the report-back is you push a button at your facility and then it tells you whether it's working or not. So, it's where you don't have to have, I did talk with one, he was actually a fire chief, and he said that in the old system, they used to have to have nine men or women stand at each siren to test them. And he said that was for the birds. But now with this report-back system, they don't have to do that, and of course, he loves it. But they, they have the city of Villa Park, Texas, has a four-siren system, the city of Waxahachie, Texas, has a 12-siren system, the city of Corsicana has a 16-siren system. On that one, he said they've upgraded a couple years ago, they, he's very pleased with it. The city of Winn, Arkansas, they have an eight-siren system, the, he said, I asked him, what's the maintenance like? He said, maintenance is not an issue overall, they're very happy with that. And I've reached out to several others and I'm still yet to hear back from some of them. So, he's, I will say, again, to reiterate, the Corsicana is a 26-mile area. They have no maintenance whatsoever on the system, and he was the one that was saying that we had an old system previously, and it, but this new, the way they have it with the feedback, they really, really like it.
Did they tell you how that report-back system works?
He told me a little bit, something about, you set off at the dispatch center and then there's polling that occurs.
So, the infrastructure I see being our problem, the infrastructure is they're using their already existing radios and repeaters, something that we don't have. So, I would be curious to see if they have something that's siren-mounted, that gets above the trees, that, and that's the benefit of these bigger cities that have their own radio systems, is the built-in repeater system's already there.
So, that was Wade Gillen. I didn't, they have 26 miles, square miles to cover, they have 12 units. So, he said they were very happy with their system.
So, I'm curious, Tara, you're kind of spearheading this. What is your expectation for what this would do? I mean, other than the obvious, it's going to make a lot of noise and irritate people in the days it's being tested, but in an actual event, what is your expectation for what this would do and what it would accomplish for the town?
Well, I don't know that I have any expectation. I have a hope that we, we could, we, in our town, we have all kinds of diversity. We have folks that are off-grid even. We have folks that, like I think Tom has said, he doesn't have great cell service in where he lives. We have people where, you know, a text message may or may not get through. So, even if, I know some, like, you know, I think Lubbock, the city of Lubbock does four different systems. They have a text messaging system for emergency management, and I did look into the prices on that, and it's very cost-effective actually. But there are people who may be out with their animals and not even have their phone on them. And I, so, you know, we are a very rural agricultural-based community, so how do we best protect our citizens when these weather events can happen really, really quickly? And, you know, it may, you know, not that we have to do, may or may not want to do this, but it is, I think it is something worthwhile to look at. How do we best warn our citizens is, you know, whether radios, you know, do we have a wireless emergency alerts? Do we have a cellphone text messaging? What is the best way? And how do we, how are we proactive in helping our citizens avoid a catastrophe?
And I think this was good to look at, and I've been thinking about what Mr. Terry's comments were last time around, which was that they were going to probably need maintenance as time goes on and that they often need repairs and that they'll have to be tested and we'll have to listen to them year over year. And, yeah, exactly. And it just got me thinking about what was the point of poetry after all, because we were meant to stay away generally from any sort of larger city feelings or anything that looks remotely like Terrell. And I just see this as a step towards that. It's not big, these aren't terribly expensive, it's a little bit of an annoyance, a little bit of maintenance, but it's also just another step. It's what are we going to do next to prevent and to help build structures to prevent possible problems? Like, do we put in traffic lights next and then call in cops everywhere to stop speeders? And then maybe we worry tremendously about our road conditions and have to upgrade them more than expected and that costs all money and we have to worry about property tax? I mean, it's just a step by step. And in my mind, the less we can make the town do, the better. The smaller we can be, especially at the start, because going forward, people are going to look at this first council as kind of the standard of where to move forward. And if they look at us providing, you know, 15 things to the citizens, then they might get excited and go, oh, well, what more can we add? What more and more? And that's kind of the way things naturally progress, is more, more, more. So, I would like to try to avoid this unless we have to. So, my thoughts is that we just, this doesn't seem a necessity. And we live in an age of communication and technology. People have their TVs, they have their phones, they have friends and family that'll contact them. I mean, of all the times that this might not be necessary, it would be now. We communicate better than we ever have, so I don't see the necessity for this myself.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, Simeon, and I, I too wonder, I don't know, I just, I still call them air raid sirens because, you know, when I was a kid, that's how we did nuclear duck and cover kind of exercises. But, you know, I do think it's a little bit like putting hitching posts up around town so that we can avoid horse and carriage accidents. You know, it seems like reverse 911 would be a cheaper, faster, and I can't account for the people that don't carry cellphones or don't have, you know, good internet. I mean, you can't, we live in the country, I think when we move out here, we understand. For example, I know that if somebody comes onto my property to do harm, I am not counting on the police to protect me, okay? I have an arsenal of things that will protect me from that person. And I took that responsibility on when I moved out here because I knew DPS in Hunt County are 20 minutes or more away, and a lot can happen in 20 minutes, so I have to be the first responder. So, you know, I think we're, it doesn't matter, this council or the next council, we're never going to cover every scenario for safety or anything else. I think we just try to make wise decisions. And to me, I've been the recipient of a lot of reverse 911 stuff, and to me, it works very well, and with VoIP and all of that, it's fairly easy to implement. And people just register, they sign up and they say, I want to be notified, and we send it out, and, you know, we make our best effort. I can tell you, if a tornado comes through, we're all going to be chatting amongst our little circle of friends, right? We're going to be calling, checking on neighbors and others, so maybe that covers some of the gap, I don't know. But I would prefer to see us do that rather than standing up a bunch of towers and sirens and, you know, all the things that that would require to keep it going.
Yeah, even as much as I despise this little shiny rectangle, I still have the emergency notifications turned on on it. So, you know, it's a free service. I guess I share Simeon and Jaffe's opinion that, you know, this is probably not where I want to be either. I would, in lieu of this type of thing, I would be more in favor of some kind of training program that people could opt into, you know, taught by a volunteer, not with city funds, that we could tell people how to prepare for things, but I don't necessarily think that the sirens are where my head's at right now.
Well, and two, just as an FYI, and I'm sure several in the room know this, but the frequency that voice operates on from your cellphone and the frequency that text and data operate on are different, right? Text tends to go a lot further. You know, if you're way out in the middle of nowhere, you quite often find you can get a text message out, but you can't get a phone call out. And that's because they operate on different frequencies and have different ranges. So, you know, if you went to something as crude as a reverse 911 text or service like you're talking about, like the, I mean, a lot of us get Amber Alerts and things on our phone, those things tend to cover better than making a voice call.
Well, anticipation of what you've just been saying, I did look up, CapTerra has a mobile text alert system. You get 1,000 messages, it's billed annually, it's $26 a month. So, that would be a nice, fairly inexpensive, the $312 a year, we could service our citizens if they would like to sign up for that, they could get that instant text message on their phone for that. So, I do know, after talking with the mayor of Doublehorn, Texas, that one of the things that they were, is a, they incorporated in 2019, so they're a sister city that is also brand-new. They are supposed to show how they're servicing their citizens. So, it's very important that we as a council and a town council offer some services for our citizens, so.
So, to muddy the water a little bit, outdoor warning sirens do save lives, guys. There's no doubt about it that that is there. But to speak on this and where we're at, they save lives in densely populated areas. And Tara got to hear it today from Richard Hunt, they're not tornado sirens, they're outdoor warning sirens. They're designed for people to hear when they're outside, so large events, golf, they want you to get inside, you're most protected inside. So, we don't have those right now. So, that's kind of my mindset on that. Simeon brought it up, and I think a few others, we're living in the information world. Tara's done some research on the reverse 911, but something I found quite appealing in my thoughts of when we're talking about which county we're going to maybe elect to follow is Kaufman County already has this for the residents. So, Steve Hooey said anybody in Kaufman County can call and subscribe to that service right now. So, it's essentially a reverse 911, code red, there's several names, but if you live in Kaufman County right now, you can, you can have that service where they're going to send you that notification. I'm not going to speak for Steve, but I know how big Steve's heart is and nobody knows where that city lies. I would imagine if I called on the Hunt County side and said, Steve, sign me up for that, he's going to, because their reverse 911 has no jurisdiction. I get notifications from University Park at my house, they know where my house is. So, if we had to go down the route of spending the money, I think it'd be spent in the reverse 911, but I would urge our citizens first to reach out to Kaufman County and go that route.
So, two-thirds of our citizens are in Hunt County, so what do we do for Hunt County?
And Hunt County doesn't offer it, I asked that question today.
Right, they don't.
But if there's a tornado in Kaufman County in Poetry, it's probably going to be close enough that Hunt County would want to know about it.
If I'm in Hunt County, I would call Kaufman County and say, hey, can I get on that? Steve Hooey said.
Well, are they going to charge us that fee?
There is no fee to Kaufman County residents, I know that.
Okay, well.
And Tara, on the, I see where you got your statistics and you're 100% in your reporting of them. My question is how the statistics are gathered. So, 2015, if y'all remember, that was the day after Christmas that several people died on the overpasses and rail let and stuff. So, this recording shows one, two, three, four, five, maybe six, I might have lost my spot, tornadoes. So, that's going to drive that average up. And the distance, I'm not sure if that's how far the tornado tractor, that's how far it was from Roy City. I'm leaning more towards the distance from Roy City because they're all pretty similar. There's no doubt about it, we live in a high-risk area, but that's not going to change anything. So, I think the statistics are accurately reported, I just think it's how they gathered the statistics that might be a little bit confusing.
Okay, is there any other comment on this discussion point?
Well, I think if there's a follow-up, Tara, my encouragement, we're not voting on it, but my encouragement would be the follow-up be done on, as Terry said, existing stuff, so people maybe even have the belt and suspenders, right? We're out in Kaufman County, but then maybe we consider implementing one for Poetry specifically. But, so my follow-up action would be for us to get other pricing like CapTerra, I guess. I mean, 26 bucks a month is dirt cheap, we could even use that for fun messages. I mean, that doesn't even have to do with disasters.
Well, and that's the thing with the sirens, a lot of times people think, oh, it's just a tornado siren, like you said, and really, strong winds can cause, hail can, you know, flood can cause significant damage. So, a text alert is actually more detailed and could actually, in my mind, be very effective. So, perhaps we want to come to the table next time with some more pricing on that type of system, maybe? Okay. All right, let's move on. Number three, discuss mayor and council members' assessment of town roads for forage trimming and tree limb removal. So, Secretary Caroline last time was assigned to divide up our beautiful map of Poetry into sections for each of us here at these tables so that we could analyze which areas were the worst as far as needing tree trimming. Of course, since then, we've had a significant damage to our trees in the ice storm. So, I did talk with Aaron Conway of Kaufman County, I said, okay, so how do you group this together? And he said, well, the tree limbs and the trimming would all be together, and then grass trimming would be a separate project sheet. So, that was helpful because, and I, as I was doing my 6.7 miles, I think I got, or 6-point something miles, I was trying to figure out how we assess this, and, you know, being a former teacher, of course, I decided, you know what, let's try this in A, B, C, D, E, or A, B, C through F. So, F would be failing, immediate need, it's a hazard, it's hazardous to our people. So, and then a D would be failing, it needs some attention. C would be, you know, it's kind of, it does need some work, but, and then B, less so, and A is perfect. And we did actually have, a lot of the state-kept highways are pretty perfect, and there are some, amazingly, there are some citizens that really do a fine job on their lawn service and their trees, and they really keep a nice job, so kudos to them. But I know, so we're each kind of, Caroline gave us each a map to cover, and I really appreciate her doing that. Is there any comment on that?
So, question, Tara, so is this a proactive effort? Are we actually getting complaints from citizens on the roads not being in good shape? I'm just curious if.
This was about, okay, so this stemmed from the fact that when Tom and I had our meetings with both counties for road maintenance, one of the things that they do in the winter months is tree trimming, grass trimming for hazard, hazardous prevention. And so, we're in the winter months and we don't have a lot of money, and so, really for, like for Hunt County, the only thing we would have to pay for is their fuel. So, it would be essentially very inexpensive for us to have all of our roads, 16 miles of roadways trimmed, would be fairly inexpensive to our town, we just need to decide to do it and put it in a project sheet.
Well, and Hunt County is still doing this because they were out on 2426 the other day with backhoe and dump truck and a crew, and they were ripping trees out or something.
Yeah, Randy Straight has been very good to us, our little town. He's, he has been very proactive and I really appreciate, you know, every time I call, he's been out the next day or he's been just doing it. And. And so as far as the trees that have fallen, the last, they've been actually working on that. But as far as a project sheet goes for us, it may not cost us but a little bit of fuel. But then we can, you know, say, "Okay, we've had these areas trimmed on X, Y, Z dates." So, you know, to our people, we are, to our citizens, we are being proactive. We are trying to make sure that we keep hazards clear.
Well, I'm guessing this is probably gonna mostly be the tree butcher guy with the arm mower that comes out and slaughters trees. Because we're not worried about keeping ditches mowed like a golf course. I mean, we're just worried about the limbs that are hitting the UPS trucks and our trucks and the cars and other things.
Well, and they're significant. I know some residents are, of course, working on those, but there are some significant limbs down. And thanks to all the, the citizens, the volunteers who worked on the cold, icy day to clear the roads. We're very grateful to them, but, so yes. And I will, you know, I don't know if we could assign to Hunt County and Kaufman County, give them these maps. I know several of my area, the ones I have, it's, it's A on both sides of the street, but then there's some Ds here, too. So it might be that we just give them the map and say, you know, "We are gonna give you so much retainer money to handle the fuel or your cost", and then they can just, you know.
Back to your original question, I have gotten some complaints of, of some trees. One from some folks in the ETJ, or actually, the same group of trees, one complaint from the ETJ and one from two citizens in, in Poetry. So, and that said, 2440 and 2434, there's like five oak trees there that are shedding limbs right there at the corner.
I guess I would suggest for Caroline, if we each went through and, not the As, but the ones that were in need some work, if we just, that were assigned, tell her. And then she can compile that list for us then to give to either Hunt County or Kaufman, depending on where the roads are. I mean, I think all of us, I went through my roads, and I have a comment on really only one that needs work. But we might, since we did it, we might as well have it compiled into something that then can be turned over to either Hunt County. It's an action item. So if, that would be my suggestion, is just, let's start going through the roads at each one of us. And if, not if it's an A, but only if it's one that needs work, a C or D or something like that. Where is it? And then Carolyn can combine it. Caroline can combine it and get it back to us.
And submit it to each?
I'm sorry?
Submit it to each county on, because you know, in, in our regular agenda item, we will be voting on that. If we want to, to give so much funds, is it in a?
And really, it's because we only have a couple of months left to get it done because once summer gets here, those same crews, they told us are gonna be doing roads.
Right.
So if we don't get it in now, it's gonna be next year, next fall, next winter.
And so who had some Ds in there, or some failing areas, Ds and As?
I had a D.
Okay.
On 247.
Okay.
As a point of order, Tara, so a couple of my roads were private roads. We're not intending to take care of private roads, are we?
If it's in our jurisdiction, it would.
I mean, I don't think that the town of Union Valley or others, typically, a private road has to be surrendered to the township, at which point the township takes responsibility. So I don't think we should have any work or, or money going into private roads until such time as they become town roads.
Well, they are, like, the one that is on your map is?
I know they're in the green, but they're still, it's a private road. If we were to go talk to those people, they would tell us it was their road.
That's true. But I'm sure they wouldn't mind if we trimmed their trees.
Well, they wouldn't, but we don't have that much money, so I wouldn't be.
Well, you know what? You actually brought up a great point. Something that I was gonna ask, because I live on a private road there, and I know my neighbors like the trees in general, and there's a couple low limbs. But, you know, I think they would take offense to us coming on there and trimming the limbs because they understand it to be private.
I mean, if we were to take over those roads, we'd also have paving responsibility and other things that I don't think we're, even if they allowed us, I don't think we could afford to take on right now.
Right. That's my understanding, is if it's a private road, they have a gravel, for instance, they keep it up, and that is their responsibility. But I guess that's kind of a gray area, is that forage might be a gray area.
Well, one of the, and it's been several years ago, that in Hunt County, I asked, or my wife asked the commissioner about doing something on a private road that borders our town, and I was told they don't do anything because of liability. If they do something, something goes wrong, then Hunt County could be liable. So I would doubt that they would, the counties would take on anything in a private road.
Since we're a municipality now, that is a really good question that I can refer to.
Yeah, we should probably get a ruling on that before we go. I mean, I'm not opposed to picking up a tree here and there. I don't want to be a bad neighbor, but I just want to make sure we've, we've sort of set ourselves up for this situation.
And there is our attorney. He popped in at a great time. We're just, we're still, no, we're still on the workshop. Yes, but we do have a question for you. So we're actually only on number three, sadly. So I guess we have a lot of discourse. In a private road, when we're requesting the county to maintain through that project sheet that we're going, going to be voting on, are we responsible to do the private roads? Are we supposed to, to avoid those if it's totally a private road? It's not a subdivision, it's just?
Property owners?
Well, yeah, we were told we own up to half the road of the private road that adjoins our property.
But of course, we're, it is now 311 feet off the road is our municipality. So it's a little different than it has worked in the past, perhaps, but we don't know.
I don't think that the town would have any responsibility for a privately owned drone at all. I can look into it because I know there's specifics around here about how the boundaries were, but I don't think I'm gonna find anything that says the town has any duty for a private road.
Yeah, private roads are literally owned by the landowners. Their plats go out into the roadway and they own that road. And so I don't think we'd have any more business maintaining a private road than you would coming to work on my own personal driveway. Both are private land, and I don't think that, so it is the city limit. But we, kind of like some of the other questions on the agenda, we probably ought to get a ruling so that when people ask, we can say, "That's great, and if you want to donate your road to the town of Poetry, we'll survey and take it in and take on the responsibility and your tax dollars, blah, blah, blah."
You were shaking your head. Oh, I just, no, you, there was a follow-up comment. So I was just gonna mention real quick, like, as far as residency goes, I think I had emailed a few of the council members. We're going to provide a formal memo with all of the questions discussed tonight in terms of, you know, who really qualifies as a resident in all these different areas, trash, voting, you know, you name it. So that's gonna be a formal memo from the firm. That'll be ready for your March meeting. So I'm here to take, you know, throw all the questions you have out at me about it, and so that the memo can be as comprehensive as possible. Thank you.
That's six. We're on, what, two, three?
Okay, so.
So Brian and I decided if our citizens, if we could urge our citizens to do more Amazon shopping, that they would trim our trees for us, and we wouldn't have to worry about.
That's true.
Hey, I wanna pass this, so I guess I was looking at roads, too, but I'll just pass this to you if you want. So this is the corner back here going into Grandi Verde. This thing's been a problem for 20-something years, not draining. So we have, you know, we've adopted that problem now. So if you wanna bat an eye at.
Is that in front of Ronnie Sap's house?
I don't know. I don't know.
Let me see that picture. Yeah, okay, so Randy Straight and I dealt with that last week. We were there last week on, on the spot. And the question was that little telephone module that's been plowed over by some truck. It's been laying in, in the water for who knows how long. Is, who it belonged to. So we did check out, that belonged to AT&amp;T, and so he, he's on it.
Okay, good.
And so as soon as they removed that piece of telephone equipment, then he's like, "I'm on this culvert. It's past due. I'm gonna fix this", and you don't even have to do a project sheet. So. Yeah.
Caroline, just to get it started, 2452, I rated it as a C. The others were fine.
Can we submit all of those to her tonight? Would that be okay? Okay. All right. So that, I think that would go a long way in helping move that along. Okay. Number four, discuss establish in an informal bid threshold for recurring town expenses and managing town expenses. So I think we were primarily talking about the, the recurring expense of lawn expense, and of course, the question came up, how many times does, does a lawn get mowed at the town hall? And so I looked at that, and it was a lot less than I remembered. It was only, we only spent 600, and I gave each of you a copy, $665 all of last year total. That was 11 mows, because he really only mowed every other week because it doesn't really grow, the grass isn't that great. It doesn't really mow, it doesn't really require a lot of mowing. So it was really only 11 mows. He charged a little extra the first of the year because it was really thick. I think the first mow was April 15th, and then the last one was November 4th. So to answer that question that came up. So that, and he does charge $60. I don't know with the price of gas if that's gonna go up or not, like everything else. So.
So that's not an exorbitant cost by any means. And if y'all remember last meeting, I said that I wanted to, us to review our philosophy on spending. So that wasn't a jab at the mowing. This is, this is a reoccurring expense that, that, and we're gonna have others later. So, so my philosophy on, on spending the citizens' money really boils down to, one, we don't have any. And two, we're fiduciaries of any money that we do get, and we're held fiduciarily responsible. So, so something that could be reoccurring, I, I think it, I think it should grab our eye and say, "Hey, this is something we should look at." So I talked to two accountants, and, and just to get their, their professional opinion on, on reoccurring expenses. One says that, that by doing that, let's say, you spend up to your threshold, and then you wait a month and you do it again. That, that's considered circumventing or bypassing approval thresholds. And the other one called it scheduled in purchases, which was both disallowed in their firms. So I'm not, I'm not saying there's anything with wrongdoing, but I, I can say with a skeptical eyes as a citizen that we don't want to see ourselves backed into that corner. Like you said, mowing $600, that's not gonna be a big deal. But when we look at the, and when we look at the expenditures from December, and I know I'm kinda putting you on the spot, these are all expenses that we agreed to pay for audio equipment. But if you're looking at this as a skeptical taxpayer, when we have line items that are 449 on one day, five days later, it's 306, five days later, or the same day, 69, 720. These are, these are, and, and I'm, and I'm not judging, just don't take it this way. I'm wanting us to be above all transparent. These are what could be considered as scheduled purchases or circumventing approval thresholds. To me, in my mind, if it's gonna reach this, this amount, $1,300, I think it's something that we should say, "Okay, here's the package, council. Here's, here's what our expert says we need, and then I think we should vote on it." Now, as we grow and we have more, more money in our budget, I think we can up our threshold. I just don't want us to see angry citizens out there going, "Well, yeah, y'all, y'all stayed under the threshold, but you spent $14,000."
Okay, so we did vote on the audio equipment. And one thing that you need to be, I guess, and I can see, here's the thing, when we have, this is a bank reconciliation page. It is not a balance sheet, per se. So in, in, in order to be just as transparent as we possibly could, a bank rec is actually more detailed than a balance sheet in a lot of ways. So I think that in, in order to be very transparent, we want you to see exactly what, where that money is going. And so some of the equipment, and I have the receipts, is going for, like, these microphones that we're using right now. So we, we, of course, all this equipment that you see right here, that allows us to, you know, have our attorney come in through audio as needed. You know, we started out with, what, two microphones, and now we have enough for everyone, so that's part of it. You can see that expense. It's not like it's not visible. So.
And I'm not, there's no wrongdoing here, trust me. I'm, I'm not saying, but we could get ourselves into a corner when, when somebody assumes, "Yeah, I was okay to make those purchases", and they get larger and larger and larger. And this is just for transparency. And if the other council members don't feel the same way, by all means. I'm, I'm just trying to be above reproach on how we spend our citizens' money.
Let me ask, you said that there was a scheduled, I forgot the term.
Scheduled purchasing.
Scheduled purchasing. If, if that were to come up in an audit, would we pass an audit?
See, so we're talking about policies of, of accounting firms, so I'm not sure where that lies with, with, you know, with the, with the audit, an outside audit. I don't think there's anything, she has receipts, if we're talking about audio equipment. There's no wrongdoing here.
Right. But we do need that transparency. Yeah.
Well, I mean, do you want us to post every receipt?
No, not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Maybe the.
A one-time purchase, you know, if, if that whole list was on Amazon, because these purchases came through Amazon, if that whole list was on Amazon, yeah, we agreed to pay $1,500 for, for the purchase of this stuff. I think it just looks better if it's, okay, it's all in one cart, and then we made that purchase, as opposed to five, six, seven days later.
So you're talking about going more like by project necessarily, by, than by.
Right.
Right. Now, that sounds good, and I totally, I agree with that in, in theory. But in reality, we have a volunteer who had to return some merchandise because it wasn't working the way it was anticipated, and then get some more. And so our volunteer expert is, but, you know, it wasn't like we, he knew exactly. It's a very complex field, audio equipment, and so it's not like you know exactly what's gonna work for this facility. So that's kind of the nature of that.
Tara, I, I think you're looking at it in the details, and this is kind of more of a broad-picture thing. You know, I, I think what Terry's saying is, let's establish a, a process to make sure that, you know, this type of thing, not this specific thing, can be accounted for properly in the future. And, and I support that. It's, the, the balancing point is, how do we, how do we allow purchasing to happen in the direction that we want to happen? And that we're accountable to the, the people? And allow purchasing to happen in a timely manner. Yeah.
Terry, so I kinda side with Tara a little bit here, that I, I don't think there was any, and I don't think you said this, there was any purposeful effort to do anything. It's just the, you know, the activities of buying and returning and whatever. But, you know, we have a number of items on tonight's agenda that we're gonna vote on, computers, printers, and other things. I mean, what if we just sort of made it a habit that for recurring expenses and for we-know-in-advance kinds of expenses, we just ask the council to vote on them? I mean, it's not a big deal. It documents it, gives us a chance to ask any questions, then we move on. I mean, we don't need to, we don't need to vote on every ream of paper because we've already given her, you know, limits to what she can spend for office supplies and things. But if we know something in advance, and we can get onto an agenda, we just say, "Hey, I wanna buy a $500 computer. You guys good with it? Yes, go." And then, you know, we, we get the reports here, these, I call it whatever you call it. But I mean, it, it itemizes everything we spent money on in deposits, so I think that gives, to me, quite a bit of transparency.
Well, I think Brian grasped my, my point the most. This is, this is a philosophy on future expenditures and, and how we're going to approach those. We're, we're not gonna do it right, and, and there is no wrongdoing. I'm gonna say that 100 times. I just want us to, as we grow, as a city council, to just continue to grow and, and not be stuck in the mud in something that, that is easily, I guess, can be, the windows can be cleaned right now if we take that philosophy that we're gonna be above all transparent in our purchasing. Yeah, we don't have to beat this up anymore.
Okay, so is everyone good with moving on? Okay, so, is everyone good with moving on? Okay. Number five, discuss spring cleanup for the town. So, this came up last fall, and here it is February, so it's probably time that we discuss it. I know that there, I've seen on various roads, some trash around, so, that, I know, I think we had Sue had mentioned about, in the past, it had, we had a spring cleanup, and of course, in order to get it out in the Poetry Post, and to advertise, you know, we need to be planning ahead. I was kind of thinking maybe mid-April. Usually, it's nice by April, people are in a good mood, the weather's decent usually, unless we have an avalanche of rain. But, we, you know, might throw it out there, that, I know that we had, I don't know, I think in the past, we had some vendors who were willing to donate a dumpster to for that weekend. It would be like a weekend, kind of cleanup, and then they would drop it off Saturday morning, and then pick it up Sunday evening, kind of thing. But, I don't know if that still exists.
We actually had some vendors volunteer to share a dumpster.
Didn't we have that? I thought we did, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, we'll just need to reach out to those guys and see what they, what they say.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, Tara, as you said, is just promoting it, right? I think we sign up for the reverse 911 now, and that'd be our first text message, you need to get out and clean your ditch.
There you go.
We need your help. But I think it's, it's just, you know, promoting it amongst the folks, ourselves and others, and just encouraging people to get out. And I know, maybe as they see others out, they'll help too. Because I know, for our stretches of road in front of our property, as we let trash build up, more trash builds up, because it's like it becomes acceptable for people to just get rid of all their beer cans and bottles, as they're driving down 2326. And so, we try to keep it cleaned up, because it makes it a little more embarrassing when they're the first one to throw the Wendy's bag out. But, you know, I think doing it at least once a year is a good thing, and I think people buy into it. I think it'll catch on.
Okay, so, any preferences? I know that we're, we can't really vote on anything, any preferences on the weekend? There's April 9th and 10th, April 16th and 17th, April 23rd and 24th, April 30th.
My wife isn't here tonight, so I am not dedicating any time. I'm not saying that I have any particular weekend open yet. Let me check her calendar.
Okay. All right. For Emily, for a spring cleanup, is that something that we would have to put on the agenda to vote on, or is that something that Caroline could just say, hey, this is it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we'll just check with everyone's calendars through Caroline? Okay. All right. Number six, discuss documenting and publishing the criteria for being considered within the Town of Poetry for the purposes of voting, trash collection, sales tax, property taxes, and other matters that will affect citizens. And I think Emily addressed, I think, it all depends on what the term resident means. We all received her, her email regarding that, and you want to go ahead and speak to that?
Yeah, I can just reiterate a little bit. So, this all comes down to case law, and case law is very specific, whereas statutes can be more general. You can kind of say yes or no when people present you with a situation. With case law, you're looking at law that had a very particular set of facts, and so, that's why I need your guys' specific questions. I'll compare it to what the case law says, and then I'll let you know, hey, case law didn't talk about this one, this is our best guess. Or if you're presenting a question that is clearly identified in case law, I can, you know, tell you what court it stopped at, these are the courts that agreed with it, you know, et cetera, so...
Okay, so, Emily, you and I talked a little bit about this, but I'm the one that put it on, and I guess my, my struggle has been, and this comes from before the incorporation vote even occurred, is that each and every time we've had an election, a different group of people have been allowed to vote, based on, I don't know what. In fact, I'm sitting here on this council, with no residences in the city limits, because apparently, there's some law that says if any piece of your land is your primary residence, you can, so, whatever. But I know Ms. Ballard and others were kept from voting, and we put a lot of pressure on Hunt County and Kaufman County. I was in the Hunt County office the morning after the election that put us up here, and I can tell you, the judge and the election coordinator were both spinning, because they had spent the entire day before scrambling, looking at our little map, and looking at the CAD to figure out. So, and then, at our last meeting, you were on the phone, but we raised the issue of who should be paying the trash franchise fee?
Right.
Right? Because our trash people that are signed up with the city are trying to do right by us and by them, but they're getting pushed back from citizens, and they're seeing other people in our jurisdiction that aren't supposed to be here, still picking up, maybe they're in the city, maybe they're not. And the comment was made, if your driveway touches the city, you're in the city, even if your house isn't, and you, I thought I heard you a little hesitant on that, saying you weren't quite sure, maybe I read it wrong.
Now, Patricia had said that in our previous meeting, that if any part of your property is in the town, then you would be responsible for the trash franchise fee.
And I think she's saying that, because we had an experience with Gray's Prairie, which is also in Kaufman County, to get them, you know, back on the books with a good election. And so, when it came down to who is eligible to be on the ballot, Kaufman County said, if any piece of your property touches their city limit, you're eligible to run. It didn't matter if you're, you know, where you lay your head, where your residence or your domicile was, was in the city limits, any piece of your property, they certified those people to run.
But now, is that if I own vacant lots around Poetry? Or do I have to have somewhere on that piece of property, the place where I live?
So, in this situation I'm talking about, every person that we had a question about had a residence, so it was residential land with a house somewhere on it.
It has to be your primary residence, is what Patricia was saying.
Yes.
And Emily, you said something that really struck home to me, and it explained it, because you, I think, I was on our, on our monthly call, explaining, and I thought if it, it really kind of hit home to me, it might hit home to everyone else as well. So, in the incorporation effort, the lawyer that was, that we had hired for that effort was under the belief that no, only, the, the line had to cross over some piece of your house, your primary residence, for you to be able to vote. And then she was, Emily told us that, yeah, about half of the attorneys feel that way. And this is a gray area in the law, and the other half don't. So, if you didn't get to vote on the incorporation, it was our lawyer's fault. So, that was the lawyer that we, the lawyer that, the lawyer that we hired for that effort was under that, and that's what we went with. The lawyer that, that we currently, you know, for, after them, after we became rated, the county's lawyers were in charge. Is this working? The county's lawyers were in charge, and then they freed it up, where if any part of your primary resident land was in the town, then you got to vote, because you have a potential to have, to have property tax, and then there should not be taxation without representation. So, that was what they explained to me, and then you kind of solidified that as well. So, there you go.
So, I've read over House Bill 347, and I know you're probably familiar with it, and that's, that's kind of what's driving all this, right? That was the, that was the end of unilateral annexation by cities. So, we voted, and here comes all the gray areas, and, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, I will send these emails to you, but my thought, from concerned citizens, is that, that they are being taxed without representation, because they didn't get a vote in the inaugural or incorporation vote, to say if they wanted to participate, to be in the city or not. So, that being said, just the few that's reached out to me, their property is, is now in the city limits, and if future governments, councils, if they ever pass a tax, they never got their chance to represent themselves and their property in that incorporation election. So, that's, I don't know that that's going to be in case law, being House Bill 347 was 2019, and, and this could be something that, that wells up. But I just want to make sure, as a council, that we're not lending ourselves to litigation years down the road.
Well, one thing, that when they canvassed the election, the people who were in that criteria was less than 30, so it would not have made a difference in the outcome of the election, because it won by 76%. So, in the canvas that did come, kind of, that was part of the discussion.
So, so, when we say canvassed...
The original incorporation canvas of the election, they discussed that, and it, because the number of residences who were kind of in that mix was less, it was like, it was less than 30 residences.
So, one of the residents I've seen on the, on the registered voter list, who, who developed the list for incorporation? Who, which judge, or who said these citizens can vote in incorporation?
Okay, word that again, please.
So, to come up here and vote, there was a list given to the election officials that says, yes, you can vote on incorporation, no, you can't. Where was that list developed?
So, the attorneys with Hunt County developed, in conjunction with the, I believe, with the elections director, that list. So, the attorneys who worked on the incorporation, now, granted, okay, so at one point, we, we had hired an attorney, but then it went to, because Hunt County was who we went to for that, the attorneys with Hunt County actually worked on...
So, they vetted out a, a list of approved voters. So, my, my problem with that, right off the bat, Ms. Strickland, Betty Ballard, Patrick and Shelley, the Royces, Scots, were all disallowed to vote. Ms. Strickland's lens, her house is literally like two feet out of the city limits. But then, on that same list, Tommy Aiken is 3,400 feet off the road, and he's on that approved voter list. So, I can see why these people that are coming going, hey, I don't think I got a fair shot at this, these are going to be some tough questions to answer.
Well, and generally, in that first go-around, cities are going to rely on the county to help them vet their initial list. Like, you're going to bring your packets in of people who have applied, and counties should kind of walk you through that the first time. And it's difficult for you guys, if Hunt County's going to say one thing, and Kaufman's going to say something else, which is why I think this memo is really helpful, so that when the election comes up again, we're not relying on what, you know, Kaufman County's attorney thinks this way, Hunt thinks this way, we think this way. We can just say, this is what our stance is, and so, we want the voter list to reflect that. So, hopefully, we can get that done in the future for voter lists.
And I'm, I'm on a little different place of this than you, Terry, but I think we're in the same area, in that I'm not worried so much about looking back, as we are, as a council, stacking decision upon decision upon decision, that presumes that we know who is affected by that decision, and I'm not sure that we do. And so, I have talked to a couple of our approved trash vendors, they were here at the last meeting, in fact, airing their concerns, trying to help them figure out, is Mrs. so-and-so supposed to pay the franchise fee, is she in or out? Well, her front yard is in, the house isn't, so I guess she doesn't. And we have other people that, and it just, it, it's like we keep, it's like Groundhog Day, you know, we keep having this discussion, and now we've passed a sales tax, it's going to go into effect in a few months. And I'd be curious as to whether our businesses, like Simeon's, and cabinet makers, and others up and down the highway, are they going to have to pay or not pay? And are they gonna or not have to pay, based on what? Where their shop is, where their building is, whether their bathroom is in the city? I mean, what, what are the criteria? And it seems like they should be consistent, and, you know, one of the things, and it's the next item, is I'd like there to be a way for people to see in advance whether we believe they're in the city or not, and to have a discussion, if there's one to be had, as to whether they're right or wrong, right? Because right now, it's, it's just very confusing.
No, I agree, Mike, and I, I think that is definitely something that we need to have. I do note that Patricia was pretty, she was pretty solid on the fact that if, on the franchise trash, on the solid waste, she was very solid on that, and she did reiterate, she did say that.
Okay, and so, what, just from my understanding, what is the ruling on that, then? Who has to pay the franchise?
Well, Patricia said in our, one of our previous meetings, that if any part of their primary residence was in the town, then they would pay the franchise fee for trash.
Oh, wait a minute. So, the house, the, the house doesn't have to be in the city limits, but if any of the property around the house touches it?
Right.
They have to pay the franchise fee?
That's what she said.
I understood it to be the spot of pickup, that determined whether it was going to be the franchise fee.
And that's, that's the problem, is that we all have a slightly different understanding. So, I'm, I'm kind of fuming here, because taxation without representation is, is one of the things that will light me up. So, I'm going to throw a big old wrench into this, and make a, ask one of the questions for you to look in case law. If somebody's house is 311 feet, or whatever the distance is outside of, if they are outside of the city limits, would it be possible for them to disincorporate? That clears the, the no taxation without representation, that clears the, if your land is in, but your house is out, that, if your primary residence, if where you live on that property is not in, can they just leave the town?
There would have to be a decision by the town, saying, we think you're in, and then they would have to say, we think we're not, for there to be a, like, formal action that way.
Is, would it be supported by case law if, if we allowed people to say, really, I'm out?
I'll look into it, I'm not sure.
I'll look into it. That was a wrench. All right, so, any other discussion on this?
Well, so...
I think we're waiting on the formal definitions from Emily and Texas municipal law.
Okay, because I know, one of the things I heard got air on this was a property tax, and I wasn't pointing at property tax. I was using that as an example of the types of things we're going to levy over time, us or the next council, or the one after that. And I'd like to see, and I don't know, Emily, are you going to give us nine memos for voting, one for trash, one for sales tax, one for property tax, one for cleanup day? Are you going to give us one that says, because I think Brian's question is an interesting one, because if I un-incorporate my land, you lose all of 2426 around the Springs, because I'm how you connect to it.
Well, then, you can't be council member either.
Well, I'm okay with that. That's actually a good idea.
That's a benefit.
I'm good with pulling that pin, so, but I think it's...
I don't...
It's going to be one comprehensive memo, but it'll be laid out like, sorry, there's a bug over here, it keeps distracting me. It'll be laid out, like, question one, you know, is about solid waste, and it'll break down what the law says, what our final conclusion is, and do that for each subtopic, but it'll be in one memo.
Okay. Well, I guess, well, I'll, I'll hold comment until we see it, maybe it addresses the questions, I don't know. But I just, I don't feel in clear conscience, like I, as a council member, can continue to vote on things that we impose on people, when we don't even know who's in or who's out, because it's, it's very vague to me, at least.
And Emily, I guess, my question is, the end result of this, is it going to be an ordinance, or a resolution, or something voted on by us, that says, here's how you define Mike's question?
Probably a policy, so...
I'm sorry?
Probably a policy, and those are typically adopted by resolution. So, it's a resolution, but the meat of it would be in a policy.
So, is that something that, for example, you will be drafting?
Yes, the memo's going to come first, before a, a formal policy would be drafted.
So, once we get that document, then we're going to have something to discuss here?
Yes.
Something in writing?
Yes.
Which is really Mike's point. We need something in writing, not just people's opinions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number seven, discuss developing a plan to create and publish a comprehensive map using the incorporation survey to show all property parcels within the Town of Poetry and its ETJ, including a list of parcels, owners, and whether the property is within the town limits.
Was that written by Tom?
No, that's mine.
I think that was Mike again.
Yeah, that's mine, so... In the time between last meeting and this, I played a little game. In my past, there was a company by the name of Mapsco, that used to divide cities up into grids, and delivery people and others would use it. Well, I, I divided our little cartoon map up into a little Mapsco, and I went into the Hunt County CAD appraisal district system. They have the best documentation of our town. Kaufman, it's there, but you have to really pay attention, or you miss it. And I started looking at parcels, some that I'm familiar with, like my own and others, and, and trying to sort of zoom in to see, so when we have these discussions, I can say, well, Mrs. so-and-so, actually, your house is here, because here's a 2020 satellite image. We can zoom in really close, and that's your house, and there's your dog, you're in the city limits. But it became very onerous, and so, I divided it up into grids, and then off the CAD, you can actually print every parcel that's in that grid, put it in a spreadsheet... the CAD, you can actually print every parcel that's in that grid, put it in a spreadsheet, and I can tell you who owns the land, how many acres it is, when they purchased it, what survey, blah, blah, blah. And just information that we can use, so that when we have these occasional, and it's not everybody that's debating this, but for the kinds, the people that we do have the discussion with, we can say, okay, here it is. My problem was, I was trying to match our cartoon map up with the CAD map, and it's, it's a little difficult to line it up. So, I had reached out to both Kaufman and Hunt County CAD, and of course, they're not responding, I didn't expect them to, and said, hey, can you send me the coordinates for that map, the KML coordinates or whatever, that I can lay into Google Earth or any program I want? And they're not answering. And I also reached out to Tara and Dorothy, 'cause this, this isn't a pencil drawn thing. This is actually Geo codes and things. This is very, very detailed, and it's data, and I was trying to get access to the data. I'd be happy to go to the, you know, do the effort of the mapping, but I need to know that when I say, you know, your property is 12 acres in the city and 15 acres in the ETJ, and I'd like to have that granularity, so we, we get rid of this discussion. 'Cause at some point, we might have people coming into the city voluntary annexations and things. It'd be nice to know ahead of time how much property we're talking about, where the property lies, all of that. And, and this is all public information. I'm not, I'm not disclosing anything private. Everything is out in the public sector. I'm just willing to pull it together, and we would put it out on a website or something, so people can see it, and we can get rid of it. But I, I can't do it with just this. We need the, presumably, I've got what Judge Stovall got from the incorporation team, and it's just a copy of this picture. It's not the actual data. They just went on good faith that this was a legit, well, I guess it was his survey company, actually, that did the survey.
Okay, so, that's a lot, you've just covered a lot of ground. So, this is a GIS certified map maker's map, so, I know he's just being funny, but it's not a cartoon necessarily, but it, they, they were given blown-up maps, they were given survey coordinates, which is required, they were given a list, there is actually a Hunt County list and a Kaufman County list of residents. So, and to speak to that, the, the CAD maps are now on the website. So, if you look under maps of poetry, the Hunt County really has done a nice job. They have a Hunt County CAD, and then we have a Kaufman County CAD. So, I'm a little, I mean, I mean, it does show the property you can click on, and it shows the property owner and, and the value and all of that. And so, that is on our website now. I'm a little, so, I'm trying to understand what your focus is.
I guess my expectation would be that we, as a town, would be in control of our map, right? The map of our city limit. We're not gonna impose that on the county necessarily, but we need to be in control. We're the ones that created this, we're the ones that pushed it out to Kaufman and Hunt CAD and someday Rockwall. You know, one of the questions I have is, where is this? I mean, who, who has this? 'Cause to me, it's the property of the city, and it should've come over with the city when we incorporated.
So, the county, where we, when, during the incorporation, we were required to submit the maps to the county. Hunt County was our lead on that. So, and I believe it's also with Kaufman County now. But I have, I have, we have that map, and we have other maps, and we have surveys.
Right, but the actual data, the actual, I don't, I don't need the printout, I need the actual data. My understanding is that Stovall did the survey.
Stovall did the survey.
Right, he's the judge that...
No, no, no. His company, he sold his company, and so it's still called Stovall Survey, but he's, he's a judge now.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying there was any wrongdoing there, I'm just saying, he's, that's what I was told, was that his company did the survey. So, somewhere, they have the electronic data that if you typed it into Google Earth or something...
Tara, where, where is the electronic data that Dorothy worked with?
We have it. I mean, Dorothy has, of course, I, if I use it on a regular computer, it doesn't, you have to have the right equipment.
You have to have the GIS.
You have to have the GIS program to be able to read it. So, if I send it to you, wouldn't make, you wouldn't be able to open it. But a GIS person could, someone who has the right equipment could. So, we have the data, but I...
Could, could we talk to Dorothy and see if she, maybe she could export it as a KML file, something that's readable in Google Maps for Mike to work with?
Tara, if you get the address, I can, I can work with that.
You can work with you?
I can work with whatever she has.
Okay, so you're, so you're wanting to put this on the website, or, I guess I'm a little...
Initially, I would bring that back to the council, let the council guide that, but I'd like to be able to lay it on top of different satellite images. The one that the CAD has is not a bad image, but we want to...
Well, they've already done that. They've already, they've already done all that.
No, I understand.
The county has.
And you can pick which flight of the satellite you wanna put it on, right? You can have the 2020 fly over the 19 or 18.
Now, they've put our map, they have the lines, the 311 feet, they have the lines drawn out, and you can see where they've overlaid it on the county map. It's already there.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm a little confused as to...
So, is there a problem with providing the digital file?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, if we have the right equipment to read it now...
Mike, Mike said that he can work with the GIS file.
Okay, so, the only problem that I foresee is, there's quite a bit of information on that. So, like, and I, and that brings up the point of the voter rule, but that's on another item, but...
Well, but is it information that's in the public sector? I mean, I, after the election that elected us, I went to the courthouses, and I got voter lists that I put out on Nextdoor, showing who should and shouldn't have voted and all of that. And it was, it's all public information. I wasn't disclosing anything secret.
Yeah, this is just, I mean, this could be a simple request, and, like, I think we can move on.
Right, and I, I suggested I might do it through a Freedom of Information Act, because I think I can do that. But I think the council, to me, it should be something that's part of the city's records, right? It should be in a file cabinet or data store somewhere.
I mean, I have, I have, I have the list on my computer, but again, I don't know if I, I can try and send it. I, I think I do. We've had, of course, there's a number of different versions through, through time, but yeah, the most recent...
Well, the one that generated this, the incorporation map, right? Because this is the final.
That is the final map, with the truncation at the end.
Yeah, so whatever, that's right, 'cause we have the little annexation of tarrel thingy.
So, yeah, I, I think that's probably an easy fix for what you're wanting.
Okay. Yeah, and again, what I'm trying to do is equip us as a, as a council to address these questions, because it's, I mean, if we can zoom in and say, that is your house, and the ruling is that if your house is in, you're in, done. We're done. But if they're looking at a fuzzy picture, I don't know, I don't think that's my bar, and I'm not...
Well, again, the maps, the CAD map is really good, and they have, I mean, I think you, it's very delineated on there. I don't, I, I think it's a very, I don't know that we have to reinvent that, Will. It's already on there. They've spent hours doing that. So, as far as the list, though, we can certainly try and get that to you.
I think he's wanting just the, the raw data of the CAD map, yeah, the, the coordinates, and then he will use his own GIS to, to...
You're wanting the survey?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want the list, yes, I want the survey, the GIS.
I have it, Mike, I'll send it to you. I have all the coordinates. I have them all. I have, I have the survey from Stovall's office.
Electronically? I mean, digital? I don't, I don't want, like, a, a printout or PDF.
I'll send you what I, I'll send you what I got. I'm not sure what you're looking for. It wasn't what, what I was looking for, but I have something that has coordinates north-south.
I wanna see the definition of the ETJ boundary and the definition of the town boundary, right? Those are specific coordinates, and if you draw lines dot to dot to dot, you'll end up with this, which is what went into the CAD. So, okay.
By the way, Judge Stovall told us, he sold his company, survey company, well before he became judge. There's no overlap at all.
Right. There is no overlap there. It's a whole nother company running that now. Okay. So, I think we can move on. Number eight, discuss developing a plan to audit and enforce the town's solid waste ordinance, including a template cease and desist letter to send to violators.
This is mine. We, you know, we passed an ordinance a while back defining who could and couldn't play with waste management in the town of Poetry. And I think, for the most part, it's going well, but we do have the odds and ends where people don't think they should have to pay. I don't think anybody's complaining about not paying, but people are complaining about paying. And so, the burden of proof is on us to say, you are in or you aren't in. But we also have, from our trash vendor last month, that there are, like, little subdivisions that aren't participating, for whatever reason, that we need to go after, I think. I mean, to me, there's no point in passing an ordinance or a law if you don't intend to enforce it, right? That's just a waste of paper. So, I think it's incumbent on us, because we set an expectation that there were so many hundreds of people that were going to come available for trash service, when we kicked everybody that didn't wanna play or, or meet our standard out, and they're telling us that didn't happen. That they did not have a big increase in business, any of them. So, I'd just like to be able to go back and say, and I think one of the things we need as part of this, is some sort of a form cease and desist letter from our lawyers. We can type in the name of whoever the offender is and send it to them, and if we find a clear violation, like Poetry Springs the other day, I noticed one of those giant 80,000-pound trucks running around my corner there, picking up at Poetry Springs. And I haven't bothered to go down there and figure out why they're going back there, but Poetry Springs front building, depending on our definition memo, is in the town, so that trash dumpster should be with a town-approved vendor. I don't know if it is or isn't, but I think if we find out they're in violation, we need to at least put that company on notice and say, here's a map of our town. Do you have any questions? Call us, but this particular address is a no-no.
So, I think the cease and desist letter's a good idea, and the reason is, is enforcement's always going to be an issue for you guys, 'cause you don't have your own police force, you don't have your own municipal court. So, enforcing any of your ordinances is gonna be an uphill battle, and the mayor and I have been talking about that, of how we're gonna get that accomplished, because we've already sent letters to Hunt and Kaufman County with pictures evidencing, you know, trucks or bins or whatever it was in the town, when they shouldn't have been, and asking them to enforce. I talked to the Hunt County judge this morning. He seems the most amenable to working with us to get our tickets that occur in Hunt County. He would judge them, and me or Patricia would prosecute them. I don't think Kaufman County is, I'm waiting for some calls back, but they don't seem as amenable, and this is really gonna come down to relationships with counties and whether they say yes or no. So, it looks like we're moving in a good direction to get Hunt County stuff enforced. I need a little bit more time to see if I can work on Kaufman County. If they say no, a plan B for those violations would be entering into an MOU with a nearby municipal court, with a memorandum of understanding, basically saying, you know, hey, these are our tickets, but we don't have a municipal court. Our city attorney, assistant city attorney, will prosecute them. Can we use your judge on the days, you know, we need them adjudicated? So, that's kind of our plan B if Kaufman County doesn't want to, you know, work with us to enforce our ordinances.
The city of Talteen might be willing.
Mm-hmm, yep. So, I've gotta make some calls.
Does that court have to be in that county?
It has to be a, a nearby court that actually touches your guys' boundaries. So, we can't look too far out. It's gonna be, and I think, Mayor, you gave me a list of several of them, of ones you knew that touched your guys' boundaries. So, I'm just gonna make some phone calls and see what the temperature is for something like that, so I can report back next meeting.
Well, and I, I'm gonna start, Emily, with, I, I don't think this is an act of defiance necessarily on the resident or the trash company's part. I, and maybe I'm just the only one here with dementia, but to me, there's sufficient confusion in a town of our geographic makeup, right, little strips, that, you know, and I don't know that the Poetry Springs, for example, venue people have ever been to one of these meetings, 'cause they may not even know we're at town. They're down there in their little world doing quinceeras and things and not worried about us. So, it may be an absolute innocent thing that they're still using waste management or whoever it is.
At least in one, in the case that we sent the pictures, it was blatant. There, I think it's probably what you're saying is happening, but this, the one that we sent pictures of, it was a blatant violation. They knew exactly.
Okay, well, and again, if we, if we don't follow up on those, then what's the point in passing ordinances?
We have, that's what I'm saying, we have, yeah.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm good for that.
So, so, but as far as a cease and desist letter, I think what she had said in our last phone call meeting was, unless we have picture proof, it's hard to prove that. You can't just show a polycard out there with someone, you know, you know, a, a non-approved vendor's name on it, that doesn't prove anything. You have to have a picture of the, the vendor actually in action, and that's kind of, you know, I, that's kinda hard to get, catch that now. Or, or a, you know, if it's a roll-off or a dumpster with a name on it, that's actually pretty easy. And that was the case for Kaufman County on 1565, so I sent several pictures of that, 'cause that is, you know, that's not a, a weekly occurrence that happens, you know, it's there continually. So...
So, again, it starts to me with who's, who's subject to the ruling, and then, once we get that, then we can go around and do. And I think if we, if it's waste management, for example, after we video them a couple of times, and it's, they're just not gonna, I don't think they're gonna mess with it. But again, in fairness, they are driving, for example, down 2,400 into the bottom, past our city limits, to pick up people that legitimately can have those services, 'cause they're not in the city limits. So, just because their truck drives around our road doesn't mean they're breaking our rule, it just means they're driving around on our road.
I followed many a trash truck to the ETJ. Yeah. So, yeah, they're...
Can I add, so, I guess, I think Sean with CRS is the one that mentioned it last week, that maybe we could, you know, prevent a lot, a lot of this with just notification. So, in, in the managerial world, there's three U's. So, they're either unknowing, unable, or unwilling. We have to make sure we take care of the first two. So, so this is almost Abbott and Costello, we gotta figure out who's on first and what's on second. But once that is done, let's spend the 691 unique stamps and send those out there, and make sure that our citizens know that, hey, you're part of Poetry, and, and we have some ordinances, and one of those is, is a trash ordinance.
Okay, so, once the attorneys send us that letter, we can possibly act on these other things. I think, let's go ahead and move on. Number nine, discuss design certain town roads as no through trucks over 33,000-pound GVWR, which stands for gross vehicle weight rating, routes penalties for such on residential roads, and the need to purchase road signs. So, this came about because there was, on my road, residential road 2326, as I was heading off to work, I saw a, probably an 80,000-pound fuel truck that should not have been on that road. And so, I took some pictures, sent it to, blew them up, sent them to the judge that our attorney had said, you know, shouldn't have that, that's actually Judge McNabb. And, and then I got a signed affidavit through Officer Bowles, and then we also, Sheriff Terry gave me a call, and we had a long conversation over how do you enforce that kind of thing? If you have trucks, and he said, you know, if you, if you say there's a weight limit, then that means you automatically have to have scales. Well, scales are very, very expensive, you know, it's cost prohibitive for our little town, and it's also difficult to find the space and money, so he, he said, the most effective means that they've seen is in, in two streets in Greenville, they've done this, where they just say no through trucks. Now, granted, through truck is not a destination truck. That is not going to a work site or going, a through truck is passing through, just because it's merely convenient. It's not a destination. So, if you're building a house, guess what? You, those trucks can come and, and service your house. Or if you have a business, you certainly have to have those trucks come to your business and service your business. It's not pertaining to those. Through truck means they're just coming through with no, no business in that area, just to cut through to save some time. So, so, he said that was probably the most effective way to handle that, instead of a weight restriction. Now, the problem I see with just saying no through trucks is then you have a lot of questions. So, well, I have a farm truck, does that mean I can't drive my farm truck? Well, no. If we put a weight restriction, as far as the gross vehicle weight rating versus a tonnage weight, that means an empty, and that's on every vehicle, we learned that through the trash process, right, the solid waste ordinances, that it's, it's standardized. And so, that standard written statement is on each truck, and so that is the empty weight, so it is standardized. And so, with that said, we should be able to have a few, at least some of our residential roads protected from, you know, hazardous trucks or oversized trucks that are tearing up our roads potentially, so that Sheriff Terry was suggesting something to that effect. And that's why this is on this discussion item.
But again, here, again, I got some emails from, well, I guess some of us did, from one of our residents about County Road 323, which I guess is... which I guess is being used by some large trucks. And she sent pictures and things and...
But that's a destination to the business there.
Well, that's fine, but it's...
That's not part of this.
Well, but it says, she claims the road is currently placarded 10,000 GVWR.
It's not GVWR.
Those signs are on, I'll send you on the map.
It's a bridge. That's for a bridge.
I don't know, I guess my point was going to be that if we're going to do these things, we, to our earlier discussion, we've got to be ready to enforce them. Otherwise, they're just a...
Yeah, that's a tonnage weight. So when it says 10 tons, or 10... Okay, you're out of order.
10,000, so it's...
This is 323, this is what we're talking about. And the signs are on each side of 323.
Okay, again...
Well, if the sign says no through trucks to your...
If you have a destination, if you're building or if you have a business, you have to have service. I think anyone who has a construction business or any kind of business, you have to allow them to operate.
Right, but if a bridge is rated at 10,000 pounds, you better not drive something heavier than that or you may end up in the creek. So this, the sign I'm looking at says weight limit, axle or tandem 10,000 pounds, period. So if somebody is going past that sign that weighs more than 10,000 pounds for any reason, they're in violation. And I'm not picking on that incident necessarily, but if we're going to add more signs around town that say through trucks or green trucks or red trucks or whatever, we need to understand we're taking on the responsibility for enforcing that.
That is actually a county sign, so I'm not even sure that it's applicable anymore. So the city would have to, the town of Poetry would have to come up with their own signs. And that's why we need to address this.
Okay, so Brian, did you just say that sign was outside the city limits or it's in?
I didn't get my tape measure.
Okay.
I don't have the GIS coordinates. But I can go back and measure. But it is, when I come down to the T and look both directions, it looks like those signs are within the city limit. I believe that those signs are for the bridges that are on either direction. And I think they are county signs. I would still support weight limiting that road. But that's, we just need to do it right. I support weight limiting the, I live on that road, so I've seen some of the stuff that goes up and down that road.
Okay, so the bridge right out here on 1565 also has a weight limit. There's several. I mean, on 249, 2458 also has a weight limit.
Right, but weight limit signs on bridges are not convenient. They're like life or death. I mean, if you're over the bridge with more weight than...
Yeah, there was, a few months ago, before the ice, there was a guy that was doing a rock hauler down that wooden bridge on 321. Yeah, and I got to see the constables escort him back up the road, yeah.
So it is a significant safety issue.
It's a significant safety issue. And there's not a good place to turn around down there either. So if somebody comes down my road, 323, by the time they get to the end, there's nowhere for them to go that's safe.
Well, and it might be a safety precaution to put a sign on each entrance so that they're fully aware before they cross that, that that's not appropriate.
There's also Culvert, right, at the West property, which is right next door to my property. And it might be valuable to see what the weight limit on that Culvert is as well. So there's several items we need to take care of here. I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything. I think we absolutely should. We just need to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Well, and to that point, Brian, I'd like us, rather than doing individual actions, which may add up to be something different than we intend, that we sort of step back and say, okay, what do we want to sort of do to protect our road citizens or whatever and figure that out? Because if we just start throwing up signs, I don't know, it gets complicated after a while. We won't be able to get out of our houses.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay, so let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess. We've been going out this a couple hours.
Do you want to go ahead and clear the last item here?
So...
There's just one more item on...
Okay, are you guys okay with that? Okay, all right. This, number 10, discuss Secretary Caroline's notice of impending resignation owing to taking a full-time job with her current employer and potential secretarial candidates.
Denied.
So she just found out on Thursday, and so, or Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And so, yes, it's very sad. But I did reach out to the candidates who had applied previously, one who was just retiring after 40, 30 years of business experience. And she, she was very interested in the position. She was going to come by. And then her husband had an MRI, and she said, I really need to address this. So she retracted again. I reached out again to Patricia Andrus, haven't heard back. She's the one that took that part-time job, or temporary job in New Jersey, I think. So we're still looking. So that position is open. And so we'll be, I guess, posting that. Any other comments?
Did you say the date of her departure? Is this like your last meeting? Or are you going to hang around a while or...?
So I told the mayor on February 10th and said I would do, you know, a two-week thing, like typically courteous, so that would make my last day the 24th. But that being said, I don't want to leave you guys in a bind. So if y'all haven't found a candidate by then, I might still be able to do some minimal things, like take the minutes. But by the 24th, I will have to have stepped back from everything else, pretty much, if that makes sense.
Is this 2023?
Yeah.
2025?
No, sorry.
You stole my line. So where are we going to advertise? Just the Tarot paper or...? I think, I think all of our intent originally was hopefully have a citizen or someone close by, but it's slim pickin', so I'm not opposed to reaching out further.
Well, I mean, she's committing from Dallas right now. Yeah, it would be great to have a citizen. You know, it is a hard job market for anyone. Anyone who has a business right now can tell you that. So I'm open to suggestions on that. I mean, we could post it in the Post, of course, but, you know, and things change. So someone might have been recently retired and have, you know, it's slaughtered for 15 hours a week. So spread the word. If someone is interested, we are in need of that position.
Well, since we won't see her again, I want to say publicly, Caroline, thank you very much for all that you've done. You have, for me at least, smoothed out a lot of this journey. I appreciate your communication, your emails, your updates and all of that. So thank you for getting us a little bit better organized. And I think the person that comes after you, whomever that is, will benefit from some of the things that you've done, that you've laid in place. So thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Yeah, she's a sweetheart. We're so grateful. Thank you, Caroline. Okay, so let's take a 10-minute recess. We're officially adjourning the workshop meeting and going into the regular town council meeting with a regular agenda. Okay, so under items of community interest, we have a work day on Saturday, this coming Saturday, February 19th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Carpenter is needed. If you have such skills, you'd be most appreciated. Under reports, financial report, January 2022. Let me pull that out. Thank you. So we have a beginning balance of $18,775.64, ending balance of $23,289.23. From our trash revenues, we obtained two different deposits, one for $3,304 and one for $1,930.50. That was two each there. We also received a donation of $700 from someone who wanted to remain anonymous, initials C.H., though, $700. She wanted that to go for the town computer, the desktop. And then we have some credits from Amazon, some of that equipment that wasn't working well with our system that were returned. Then we also had some additional purchases for some audio equipment, office supplies, and postage. Then our standard checks, our newsletter, of course, FEC Electric, the secretarial invoices, and then the electricity payment of $50 for use of this building. It was $50. Okay.
Question, Tara, so I asked, again, last month for the legal, not necessarily the invoice, but it is sort of an update on our expenses to date. And Emily, I think you said, based on the minutes, I'm just reading out of the minutes, that the year, end-of-year bill would be $1,800 with 60 days to pay. Presumably, that takes us through December 30th or the end of the year, and then whatever we've accrued. So I guess I'm, I'd like to see us accounting each month for what our exposure is, for lack of a better word, not necessarily the paid invoice, but kind of how many hours. We know the rate, if you just showed us the hours or whatever, so we can...
And I apologize, you don't have them. I am not in charge of bills at the firm, so I am lighting fires under everybody who needs them to get the bills out. Patricia assured me they would be in your guys', I don't know if she's emailing them or mailing them, but in your inbox either way, next week. You'll have your December and your January, each will be for $1,800, but it'll show everything we've done and what had to be written off to get you to your $1,800 number. And so that way you can see, you know, how far over we've gone on other things. Not that we're saying we can't ever go over again, but that way you have a good idea.
Your end bill is $1,800, and the January bill is going to be $1,800 also.
Yes.
Okay.
We just got that email today.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's kind of a pretend bill because your actual expenses were considerably more than that, you're saying, that you discounted it.
Yeah, but Patricia's already written them off the bill, so.
So is that a forever thing? Are we going to do that forever?
I'm also not in charge of that, so I will get an answer for you on how that...
Hopefully, she's not writing off your portion.
It's probably me, so it's okay.
Well, the reason for bringing that up is back to Terry's earlier question, on another topic. I just want to be sort of above board, so I want to understand where our costs are coming from, right? Legal and otherwise, so that we can, you know, explain to the citizenry sort of how we're spending their money, because we don't have a lot of money. And we clearly need good legal representation, and you guys are providing that. But my fear, if I have a fear, is just that we suddenly wake up and we have, you know, like with the Poetry water, I remember when I first moved here, the water was $39, $40, $50. One month, it was $800. And I'm like, okay, is this like an initiation or what? Well, it turned out I had a leak.
Gotcha.
And it was $800, and they weren't real sympathetic. So I don't want to get a $25,000 legal bill one month.
Okay, we've been over this a little bit. So, yeah, I don't want to get in mud.
Claire, is, are we going to be getting the council the billing sheets? Turn out a billing sheet each month.
I don't know what, like, the bill Patricia signs off looks like. I think they take our billing sheets and put it in like a different spreadsheet so you can see day by day, and then our initials are next to whoever did what thing. So what, the information in our billing sheets will be in the bill in whatever form they put it in.
Right, but you have to do billing sheets. And so there's categories for Poetry. And so that's my question to get into Mike's. Are we going to get the billing sheets for Poetry each month? Not necessarily what we're due, but what we have, so we know where we are and then what's coming up.
The bill will list everything in the month we've spent legal services on, category, the time, and then initials of who did what. You're not going to get like our, like the sheets I'm turning into our accountant. Like, that information's taken and put on your bill in a different way. So it's not exactly what we're doing, you know, every single day, but all the information will be on your bill. Does that make any sense? Okay.
Well, yeah, and I guess, so then, we're going to be getting it not necessarily when it's due, but when it's accrued each month, correct? Is that what you just said?
So if things worked how they normally would, you would have got your January bill, you know, February, first week of February, and then had 60 days to pay it since then.
Right, so we will be getting it each month.
So we still have 60 days to pay from the point that we receive that in our inbox, right?
Yeah, I think that's what Mike's getting at, and I agree.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Tara, a strange side question. Are we on a cash base or accrual base accounting?
Well, the town has not set up their accounting software yet, so that is yet to be determined. I've done both, so I guess we could, that's really not on the agenda.
Well, it's part of the financial reporting. You're reporting that it hasn't been determined.
I'm trying to get out of here before midnight, but so, but yes, and that's a good point. But it'll certainly, we certainly consult accountants on that.
But, yeah, Brian, I mean, there will have to be some accruals. You know that, the end-of-year financials, it's going to have accruals. It's not everything going to be, this is a cash flow statement we're getting. It's not a financial sheet.
Yeah, this is just a bank rec, basically.
An income statement. Income statement will have to have some accruals. We would be surprised if it didn't.
It's a matter, more a matter of when you realize it rather than...
I think most municipalities are in accrual system. Is that your understanding, Emily?
I have no idea. So I can find that out easily, though, and let you know, but I have no idea.
So, yeah.
I mean, there's an income statement, balance sheet, and cash flow statement. And basically, what we're looking at now is a cash flow statement, but not the balance sheet or the income statement. Income statement should have accruals, Brian, that's my question.
Well, once we, okay. All right, let's move on, please. Number two, planning and zoning committee report by Catherine Hartwick, chairwoman.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are we on? Okay, I had no idea I was doing this. I will tell you, it's good to see everybody. We are working hard to get that comprehensive plan done. We have looked into those maps that you were asking for, and we're working on it. And we also would like the memo.
Do you want to go into a little more detail on what you're currently doing or no? Because I was kind of impressed with it. I got a little smidgen, sliven.
Which part? I mean, literally, I just saw my name on the agenda.
Okay, I thought Caroline called you.
No.
Oh, you emailed her, okay. Is that explaining something? Okay, all right.
I'm juggling four emails.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're still working, we're working hard.
They have been meeting nearly every week, every Wednesday, and so they are working on it.
And we are pressing forward. We hope to have something solid soon. And I understand your frustration with that map. We've got some better maps. And we will be presenting them to the public. We're trying very hard to get to the point where we can call that public meeting. But we're not quite there, we're close.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Thanks for your work. Real quick, I heard something, and soon, I have a concern, you know, it doesn't seem like there's, I know that it's kind of a duck on the water, you know, their feet go fast underwater, but you don't see anything about...
That's pretty much how we feel, and there's no handbook for this, folks.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just trying to determine, you know, what's going on. We haven't seen anything.
Invite him to a meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay. Why don't you come visit?
I'll step out. Easy.
We are going through other cities' ordinances and planning and zoning and figuring out how that's going to fit into Poetry. We are trying to make sure that we document what we have right now because it's the base map that we have to start with. We're not trying to change anything. We're trying to show you what's here. And that's where we are headed. We should be there soon. Barring any more ice storms, natural disasters, any other things like that, we should get there probably within the month.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, so consent agenda under K, minutes for the January 18th, 2022 meeting, regular town council meeting?
I'm making a motion to move it to the regular agenda. I have two edits.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second to move that?
Second.
All right, that motion has been made and seconded by White to move the minutes to the regular agenda? All in favor? And that passes unanimously? Okay, on to the regular agenda, then. We'll move that, the minutes. What are your amendments?
One's just editorial on the dates, 2022. That's not a big deal at all. One's just editorial on the, on the dates, 2022. That's not a big deal at all, but it needs to be documented correctly. And then on page nine, I do enjoy reading these minutes, because it reminds me of how long the last meeting was. So the very last line, Councilmember Fowler said, "It appears that most houses are outside the city limits." Just for reference, we was talking about the sand pit, and my actual comment was that most of the sand pit is outside the city limits. It's not a huge edit, but when we start talking about this later, that could be-
What page is that?
Page nine of 14, last sentence. Most of the sand pit is outside the city limits.
Which paragraph is that?
Pretty bottom.
Should be the last sentence on the page. It says houses are-
Houses, okay.
Should be sand pit is.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, actually, Emily, I'd be interested to get your take on it, because there's been a few things in some of the minutes that it didn't exactly quote me exactly for what I was trying to get across, at the very least.
Mm-hmm.
But I generally looked over it unless it was a, something that was voted on, because I understand that that's the most important part, is that a fine way to do it, or should we get, should I go through this with a fine tooth comb and really make sure it's all correct?
Ultimately, it's up to you, like legally, not one is right or the other. Like, I think it's a good idea you fix that sand pits one, because we're talking about the idea of what being a legal resident means, and so that could be important at some point. It will be important. So maybe, like, big discussion items, and obviously, things you make motions on, or, you know, voting on to approve or made a comment on in that way, I would make sure is really correct. If it's something just more minute, if they paraphrased you correctly, I would say that's probably okay. If they paraph, you know what I mean, as long as it's not, if they left out, you know what I mean, there's just that line you're going to have to decide for you what's okay or not. But I think it's, that philosophy of doing it is generally okay.
All right. This judgment call. Thank you.
Do you have an amendment?
No, not this time around. It's just going forward. Good to know.
Okay.
On page six, there's a correction. I already showed it to Caroline, but about two-thirds of the way down, where it says, "Councilman Anderson said," and it should say, "The Duramax pothole machine costs $200,000." And then the next line says, "Is it comes out to about $50 a day, not five to 50?" And then the very top, where it says, first line says, "Councilman Vincent said," I believe that was me. I know Brian and I look a lot alike, but, sorry, Brian. But I believe that should say, "Councilman Anderson said." That's all I had.
Motion to approve of amendments?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded by Fowler to approve the minutes with said amendments. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, so go to number one, discuss and consider the town hall annex inspection report of January 22nd, 2022 by East Texas Home Inspection. Councilmember Anderson paid for this out of his own pocket, from a generous heart. Thank you. And so would you like to go over that, Tom, since that was your spearhead?
I guess, I think the council has already seen it about a month ago. I would say that the inspector who had used before did a very good job, and what he did is in a lot of detail, and by the way, I believe Kevin has also seen it, because they've been working on a few of the items. But by and large, most of the items were cosmetic, or all the items were basically cosmetic, in my opinion. There was nothing structural or anything that was a serious danger. And the inspector, his report was very detailed, got the photographs to go with it, and he, by the way, did agree to keep, that we should be keeping the sanctuary separate. He would not comment in any way on the sanctuary, other than to say, no, he wouldn't touch it in this inspection. That 'd be a totally different inspection. So anyway, his, he gave what I thought was as good a seal of approval to the annex as we could have really asked for, and with the cosmetic issues, which are relatively cheap, well, I thought it was well-spent. And more than anything, it's legal. It provides a legal basis for us to go ahead with the lease, assuming that the lease is for the annex, and then we know as a council and as a city that we've got a legitimate inspection by an authorized licensed inspector. And I even talked to the owner of the company about this, and he agreed that this is a very valid document that we have. And he even put his name on that, the owner of the company. So, and he also said, "We were free to share it among ourselves if there's anybody that wants to see what it is." Normally, they don't share them, but, because it's for a buyer of a house, but he said, "In our case, we're free, anybody to read it and comment." So anyway, I guess I would have to say, if anybody has any questions, let us know, because I had very few issues with anything that, because they were mostly cosmetic.
So I have a few questions, Tom.
Sure.
Thank you, because I've seen the invoice. That's very generous. And this is a combination to Emily's question. So if we're using this for protection, that, that we've done due diligence, the bottom of every page strikes that. This, this report is exclusively for Tom Anderson and is not transferable.
And he, and we, I sent you a letter from him that corrected that
Okay.
and said it is transferable, and it's free to use. He said, "In a normal housing inspection, it would say that," and it would, they put it in, but the owner of the company gave us a release and said it's not exclusive.
Well, it goes on further to say, "It's not to be distributed to anyone without first obtaining written permission from both Tom Anderson and East Texas Home." So he's given us that written permission, apparently.
But does that, does that suffice, counsel?
As far as entering the lease, like, what's your question specifically?
I just want to make sure that, that it suffices us having due diligence, that we got it inspected for, for safety and for, for other things.
Is the, is the part where they say you have to request written permission from them taken out when you got the release, Tom? Like, how you said, that part at the bottom-
Sorry, I can't hear you.
That part at the bottom of the page that you said they had taken out, because they did allow you guys to share it with people, did they take out the part where you have to, it says you need to request written permission from them?
Well, I sent the letter from the owner saying we're free to share it.
Can we get a copy, perhaps, of that taken off?
A copy of the letter?
That disclaimer, this in blue ink at the bottom of every page, can we get, maybe get a copy of that without that disclaimer?
Copy of the actual report with that footer taken off that says only for you.
I can ask, but we've already got a letter that's taken it off, the letter document, Emily. And I think before I ask, you ought to look at the letter that he sent, Sandy Harris, and see if you, after reading his letter, you think it still needs to be taken off. If you do, I will. I'll give you, you've already gotten a copy of the letter, by the way.
So the letter is fine. My only worry when things are done like this is if the letter ever gets lost, then we don't have the letter, and then we just have the document with the footer.
Right.
So for, in the future, I worry. But in terms of legality, that letter is fine. But I think it would be prudent. If we could get another copy, it maybe just wouldn't hurt to ask. If they say no, they say no.
Sure.
See if they can remove the footer.
I'll ask him, yes.
Okay.
And, and two other things, small. We just need to make sure that the windows are not cocked. That's a safety violation for, for means of egress. That's not a big deal. I just want to make sure that we-
We have, I think we have, we have-
They are cocked shut. They need to be removed.
We have two or three windows that are functioning. The rest of them are shut. We're trying to work on that.
And then the only other question I had, Citizen West asked us about asbestos and lead paint, and exclusively says that the inspector is not required to do that. So I'm just posing that question to the council. Is this something that we want to pursue through another inspector?
Okay, well, what, what I understood is all insulation is new in the walls. There was an inspection underneath it, and there was, as far as I know, no asbestos there. He did inspect the ceiling, what was in the ceiling, and there was no asbestos there.
Okay.
So-
What about lead paint? Is that something?
What?
Lead paint, are we concerned about that? It's also excluded.
Most all the walls were new, and it was new paint, so the new paint doesn't contain lead.
So all the exterior walls, there's, there's no old paint? I'm just-
There is no old paint on the exterior.
Essentially.
All the walls were removed, and so it's all new. Well, there was one wall in the kitchen that was old, but then it's been covered with new paint, so.
The only portion that I could even think about that might be a problem is the trim around the windows may have had lead paint, and most of it was stripped, and it's been repainted with good, with modern paint.
That was just a question for council, because Citizen West brought that up.
We'll see if my wife comes down with cancer.
25 years ago?
Yeah, 25 years from now. It'll be a while.
Okay, Emily, just to be clear, the letter from Sandy Harris, who owns the company, said on 1/22/22 at approximately 9:00 AM, "A commercial inspection was conducted, structured at 2425 FM 986 Tarell. Person requesting inspection was Mr. Tom Anderson. Per mutually signed contractual agreement, this letter will serve as a written consent that allows him to share the inspection and all other documents received from our company concerning the struc, the structure we inspected at 2425 FM 986 Tarell." That's his letter of release.
That's fine. I just worry about in the future, if that letter ever gets separated from the actual report, then nobody knows, and they'll just see the footer that says this isn't transferable. You see what I mean? That's my only worry, and it's-
Sure, I'll ask for it.
Okay.
Yeah, just see what they say.
Is there any other decision that we need to make on this, or we just, are we accepting that officially?
I would make try, if anybody would like to make a motion to accept, I would, you could do that, so that we have something on the books for this.
So do we have a motion to accept this inspection report with the addendum that Tom has already gone through?
I move to accept it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to accept this report with the amendment that Tom mentioned, and it has been seconded by Fowler. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Yes, thank you, Tom, for spearheading that and taking the charge on that. We just really appreciate you with your generosity on that and your time. Number two, oh, I'm sorry, Kenzie. Okay. Kenzie had signed up to speak on that. Okay. Number two, discuss and consider adding a $202 per year amendment to the town's TML Risk Insurance to cover the town hall slash church annex under the town's current policy to put into the lease agreement currently being written. So I talked to, tried to call Mitzi, who's the vice president, called Wesley, got ahold of him. He said they had had a meeting last Thursday night, I believe, and were discussing, it's still with the real estate attorney, I believe, from Greenville. And so I think when he had, I believe what he told me was that there, if they were going to try and cover the insurance, it was going to cost nearly $3,500. Is that correct? And then, so this was a great, great price. I felt like $202. And I'm actually meeting with Mark Brody on Thursday, who is the TML, our representative from TML Risk Insurance, and he's going to look at that as well. But so we just have to-
So is the $202 for the $125,700 replacement cost per accident, is that what?
Yes, for, in case of fire hazard or anything, then, then the town would recoup the monies if, if they were to be damaged.
So Tara, the date on this shows basically now, 2/11, for a year. I mean, do we, we don't have our contract that we're waiting on, as you just said. Do we, is this something that we can only jump in or out a certain time, or can we, let's say we get the contract in March, we go ahead and get insurance in March?
No, they've been very amenable. In fact, yes, it would just take a day turnaround or two. In fact, I'm supposed to meet with Mark, who is our representative from TML Risk, like I said, on Thursday, and he'll, you know, he just wanted to kind of meet us. But yes, we can change that date as soon as we need to, and make it effective. They're pretty flexible, from my understanding.
Okay, and just to make sure, you said that was payable to the town, not to the committee?
Well, if, right, the town would be paying this. It's an addendum to our current insurance. We paid for the, the annual insurance for the town, its council, its volunteers. So this is just an addendum, so we would just submit the, well, they're actually giving us a 2% discount if we pay in full. So it'd be $197.96 if we pay in full, and that's just an addendum to the current insurance for the town.
Well, so it's, it's 202 isn't a lot of money, but it's not my money, right? It's the citizens' money. So my vote would be that we push this down the road until such time as we have a contract.
Well, the problem with that is that they're trying to write it into the contract right now, is, is what needs to happen. Actually, it needs to be in the contract that we're willing to do that.
Well, and I, I think that would be fair, that we, the, the leaser is required to carry a certain level of insurance on the structure, contents, whatever, and we agree to do that, but I don't think we need to buy insurance yet. You know, we can-
Can we have in the contract that, like, within 30 days of signing?
Yes. So we can have all of these characteristics in here, reflected in the quote, and just that it'll be active within so many days of execution.
Yeah, I mean, it's like when you get a car loan, they say you have to carry comprehensive and whatever, and you don't pay for it until you actually buy the car. But once you do, you have to make sure you have it.
Okay, so are you saying that we could vote to approve it with, or how, how would you suggest?
You could make a motion to, well, we don't really have an item about the lease itself.
The motion is we don't do anything. I mean, we need to see the contract. We, they can put whatever they want into the contract. We don't have any rein over that.
Yeah, we're going to have to vote on the contract.
We're still sitting here waiting to receive something that we're going to consider. And I think the spirit of the council is, we're okay with them putting something in there, but until we see it, we ain't signing anything.
Well, and that's why it's here, so we want to make sure everyone's good with that. It sounds like then kind of-
Yeah, I mean, you could just make direction to have it included in the lease, and then it's not like a formal motion of acceptance or any-
Again, we can't really talk as a council unless we're out in the open with you. So here we are. Okay.
Tara, just, is there any indication of when they're going to get the lease back to us?
They're working on it. They, Wesley had indicated that they need to have yet another meeting, so I don't know.
So you don't know?
They're working on it. Okay, number three, discuss, oh, 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 excuse me. Number two, Kenzie.
Hi, guys. So like y'all mentioned, there's no contract, so I find it difficult to add insurance, you know, certain plan. But like you mentioned, this is just so that way in there that we're going to provide insurance, correct?
Yeah.
So this isn't actually picking a plan. And then also, I'm a little not knowledgeable on how insurance works on those type of buildings. Is the annex connected to the sanctuary?
No.
Okay.
There is at least a one-inch gap. I mean, it's, it's negligible, but there is a gap all the way around.
Okay, because I didn't know if it was connected, if we would, there would be like an insurance requirement.
To be clear, the roof is connected, but the walls are not connected.
So is that affected by insurance?
Well, actually, the, the roof-
It's a common roof, but it's not, but there's a gap in the walls, so that the walls are not directly connected, nor is the floor.
Okay, so even though it has that common roof, will insurance allow us to get insurance on just the annex with it having that common roof?
When we explain that, they did.
I don't know.
I mean, but, yeah, I guess we'll find out. But he is going to come and look at that, so.
Who's he?
Mark Brody, with TML Risk.
Actually, it'd be to the cemetery's benefit if something happened to the building. Actually, it'd be to the cemetery's benefit if something happened to the building, 'cause that's probably a lot more money than it's worth, so...
Well, this is just on the annex. It does not cover the sanctuary.
Well, that's definitely more than it's worth.
It is, it's just on the annex, and it covers, of course, our contents. I just put about ten thousand dollars in contents, because all this audio equipment is gonna be in there. Um, I don't have the space to, in our temporary town hall, to keep all this forever, nor would I want to. So the, you know, the town equipment, the whatever, computers and copy machines and desks, whatever we have, then would be in there. So that does include the, the property of the town. Any other discussion on that, or can we move on? Okay. Number three, discuss and consider taking action on committee assignments.
Now, I, I requested this one go on. Um, I'm going to be leaving the, the Poetry Post editing committee, as I just, I can't respond quickly enough. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, that it was known that I, I was not on that committee anymore, but also wanted to leave it open in case anybody else had, um, committee assignments that they needed to juggle.
Um, yes, I guess in journalism, I've learned that there is definitely a deadline, and there's a quick turnaround. So, um, I know that Tom Anderson has been fabulous, Caroline has been great at doing those edits. Um, we've had some volunteers, um, who have done that, Dorothy Dillon, she's pretty good at finding the typos. So, um, is there any council member that would like to volunteer for that?
So what, this is just being a third on the, looking it over and with you and Tom?
Mm-hmm, so...
Simeon, you looking for another career?
No, and unfortunately, it takes me about twenty-four hours to go through my emails and stuff, which I know is too long, so... I would volunteer, 'cause I know it's not a ton of work, I'm just gonna be too slow.
It is a quick turnaround.
Exactly.
Okay, well, since I'm one of the people that spoke up about having other eyes on it, I'll go ahead and fill that role.
Okay. All right.
We need to make sure we understand how we're communicating those, so I'm watching the right inbox and...
Right.
Hopefully, it's through exchange, right? 'Cause I'm kinda getting trained on our new city email.
Um, so I can send it to the correct email?
Yes.
All right, so we need to vote on that, I suppose, is that correct, Emily? Okay, so all those in favor of removing Brian Vincent and substituting that with Mike Jaffe for the editing position for the Poetry Post? All those in favor? Or, wait a minute, a motion, so we need a second, anyone have a second?
Do we even have comments from the...
Second.
Um, yes, Kenzie, did you wanna speak? Okay, she's gonna pass, okay, thank you. Um, keep me straight. So is that motion is to remove Brian Vincent and place Mike Jaffe in that position of editor on the Poetry Post? Is there a second?
A second.
All right, that's been seconded by Anderson. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number four, discuss and consider a budget expenditure for a laptop, which will allow the town secretary to type and film during council meetings not to exceed eight-hundred. Now, this was already on the budget, um, so it is a budget item, but of course, it's over five-hundred dollars, so now's the time. So it's not, um, initially, we thought we could get away with like a, a really inexpensive laptop, but, um, our tech person said that it would be really beneficial to have that same person be able to video on the laptop at the same time, so that we can free up some of this, um, equipment that's being borrowed. Um, so that sounded like a reasonable request. So a laptop that would, um, and I, meet that criteria and film, and our budget, of course, is eight-hundred. So do, any comments on that? Okay.
One, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't have a problem with getting the laptop, but I'm, I'm curious about the feasibility of recording and taking notes on the same laptop during a meeting.
Right now, this laptop, twelve percent?
Twelve percent CPU, and it, the, the recording screen doesn't need to stay on top? Okay.
Yeah, it's completely doable, there's one in case, I'll try and send you an email, but there's one for five-fifty that I just bought for work, and it's, it's pretty solid, so I'll send you over that.
Yeah, the ones we were looking at were in the five, six-hundred dollar range or less, so...
So we're approving not to exceed eight-hundred, five-hundred, six-hundred, those would be within that, so...
That's, we're trying to save every dollar we can, and we actually had to go through the laborious process of getting the tax exemption to save the tax money, right, so...
Okay, so motion on the floor, Tom seconding.
Okay, we've made a motion to, and it's been seconded, to approve the expenditure not exceeding eight-hundred, I think she passed, um, on a laptop for the town secretary to type and film, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Number, number five, discuss and consider a budget expenditure for a desktop not to exceed seven-hundred dollars. A citizen donated seven-hundred dollars cashier's check to the town with a request for this specific expenditure, so that we can put our QuickBooks on, and that would be primarily for the mayor's use. We do not, we had...
For the mayor's use exclusively for town business?
For town business, currently, the mayor is using a borrowed computer, corporate computer, as well as the secretary is using a borrowed corporate computer. So we kinda need to get that off of the borrowing and get our own as a town, probably.
Well, I mean, sure, and you said somebody specifically gave us money for this, donated money for this?
Yes, yes.
Oh goodness, I could hardly say how we could deny them what they gave us money for.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded by Jaffe.
Any comments from the citizen?
Um, number five, Kenzie? No, okay, you're good.
I have a question. Uh, Brian might have summed this up, but I'm just curious, and he said the budget says desktop, but are, can we, or are we opposed to buying another laptop for portability? Do we have to buy a desktop?
Um, well, all I know is, um, working on a laptop all day long versus a desktop, it's preferable to have a desk, especially when you're doing the counting, okay? Yeah, yeah.
I work on a laptop all day long, every day.
Well...
But with a secondary monitor, which wipes out any savings.
Right, I have two monitors, too.
You know, it's, it's not on here, Tara, but we're gonna have to come up with some kind of an asset tracking system at some point. It could be a spreadsheet, but just, you know, like what belongs to us, what belongs to you?
Well, we have, I know in, in our corp, in our companies, we have these metal, really cool metal stickies. They're plated with whatever, um, so yeah, that's a good point, that might be something for another agenda item later. But, um, it is, um, there's a lot of borrowed right now.
Call for vote?
Yes, so, Simeon, did you make a motion, and that's been seconded by, by Jaffe, that we spend money not to exceed seven-hundred dollars for a desktop? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, okay? Number six, discuss and consider purchasing a printer with color, legal, and scanning capabilities not to exceed five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. The reason this is on here is because our budget set it three-fifty for a printer. I think it could go cheap, especially initially, but then after, I realized with time, we actually need, um, when I was working on the, um, the election in November, oh my goodness, I had to copy out so many legal-sized papers, and we have so, and of course, for our own, very own project sheets, they're on legal paper, um, so we need that legal capability. My, I have, for my fee store, I have a really nice new printer that's spoiling me immensely, but it has, it just is very quick with the legal capabilities, not that we have to have that, but, um, we do need something that will print out color as well, especially if we're gonna be tracking down uh, these solid waste vendors, that color's helpful. So, um, that's why I thought, you know, we, we maybe not go with the cheapest printer, we need something with these capabilities, scanning capabilities. Um, I have a really nice scanner, and again, in the fee store, it's four-hundred dollars separate, but I think we can possibly, you know, trying to be frugal, but also trying to get what we need is kind of a fine balance there. So, um, any comments on that?
I think if we need a, a multi-function machine like this, six-hundred dollars is a reasonable level. We don't wanna buy a crummy one, so, of course, the real expense is in the, the ink.
Right, and that was kind of, I was weighing that, is okay, do we go with a little bit more expensive one, and then get the bulk ink, which saves money on a regular basis? It's, it's kind of a hard decision, I think a lot of companies have to deal with, but as a young, immaterial municipality, I'm not sure. We do have, we do have the copy machine that the Poetry Water Supply donated to us. There's some drawbacks to that, and Caroline can tell you all about those. Um, it doesn't make the best color copies, it doesn't have scanning capabilities, it doesn't do legal, but as far as making the packets, it'll, it'll do that, it doesn't do double-sided, I think, or did you get it figured out to do double-sided? Or it doesn't do double-sided? It doesn't do double-sided, so those are the drawbacks to that, although we're very grateful to have something, especially for the packets, since it does take a lot of time to, and, to make those, so...
The motion we accepted.
Okay.
Citizen comments?
Uh, Kenzie, did you wanna speak to this? Okay. Um, number six, okay, so we have a motion by Anderson, is that seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Vincent to, um, make a, a, consider purchasing a printer with color, legal, and scanning capabilities not to exceed five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Number seven, discuss and consider road maintenance ILA project sheet number one, amount of initial escrow, and, and, of course, this is leftover language, I think, how to determine areas of priority for forage trimming and indoor tree limb removal. We did discuss in our workshop, um, that we were gonna give those areas to Caroline on the map, and the, the high need areas, the ones that were C, D, or F, I believe, um, to Caroline to condense, to be able to know which areas are the most needed for that. So do we have, I, I think with Hunt County, we do have to pay the diesel, um, they've been very generous with us, though, and very good with us, as far as Kaufman County goes, I think they're gonna want that money in an escrow account in advance. So we need to decide as a council how we move forward on that.
Are you asking us to approve the form?
We need to decide upon an initial escrow account, so that they will pick up our tree limbs. Um, they primarily, like I said, in Hunt County, they have to, um, we pay for the fuel, and that's minimal. You know, the, the diesel to run the trucks, to chop up the tree limbs and trim the trees.
Do we need to look at our report card that we're sending Caroline to kinda help us get a better idea? 'Cause my, my roads are not gonna cost any money right now, they're in great shape, but I don't know what y'all's roads look like, so I don't wish...
Well, I think we have a window, um, they do the tree trimming in the winter months, and they're doing it now.
So what are you thinking on this?
I'm thinking, you know, if we just throw something like, um, you know, for diesel, um, goodness, some of you who, who operate diesel day in, day out, you can tell me on a daily basis how much that, you know, maybe we...
Well, you know their heart and their willingness, do you think if we put in five-hundred dollars in there, are they gonna go, "Oh, we can't even get started," or are they gonna go, "Okay, guys"?
I think for, yes, I think they're gonna be agreeable to that, and that's kind of the, the ballpark figure I had in my mind, was five-hundred for each county, and let's see, 'cause, you know, we're gonna be, you know, adding to that, hopefully, as they work on our roads. So I think it's a good start, starting number, perhaps, do we have a motion?
Tara, I think what we need to do, we need to agree, yeah, five-hundred dollars, that's fine. Then we need to talk with Terry Barber, as well as, you know, Randy Straight, and let them know what we're saying, so then they can come back, and if they say, "No, that's not enough," but do it in a discussion rather than just an email.
I did talk with Aaron, but of course, Terry was unavailable, but yes, um, the five-hundred would get them started. I mean, that would at least get them, at, at least in two to three days' worth, at least, I would think, even in Kaufman County. So then we could, you know, go from there, maybe.
Yeah, I, I guess that would be my suggestion, is, yeah, put in a number, we get on the phone or go to their office in Terrell, it's, it's easy to go to for Kaufman, and just sit down and talk, say, "Is this enough?", and do it over the phone. But that's kind of what we agreed to when we had that meeting you and I did with both of them, is it trying to learn how to do this, we're, we're not gonna be firing off emails, we're just make it a little more personal, go down and talk to them.
Right. You know, we have, and of course, it's, it's a legal size, and we have it already, you know, printed off. We could certainly submit that and say, "Hey, is this..."
Yeah, this, this isn't nearly the level of expense of, uh, renewing roads.
Right.
This is much, much smaller.
Okay, Kenzie, did you wanna speak to seven? Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the five-hundred-dollar amount for each county?
I move to approve.
Approve five-hundred dollars for each county?
Yes. Uh, who's motion was this?
I'm sorry?
Who made that motion?
Tom.
Tom, and who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Fowler seconded that motion. So we have a motion to approve five-hundred dollars as an initial escrow amount for each county to, to deal with our priority forage trimming and tree limb removal. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
So we're gonna put the money in escrow, but that's not the take action part yet, right? We gotta somehow figure out where they're gonna go work, so we know kind of what we got for our effort?
Well, I think to speak to Tom's, um, point was, okay, we have the maps, we have the labeled A through F, okay, F being failing, and D also being failing, so then they would prioritize, I think, from, you know, the, maybe, if they, it's D and Fs, for sure, and then if they had any money left over, maybe go to C. And so we have the maps, so I think, giving those to Caroline, and then, once Tom and I sign a check for each county, we can actually go, we're gonna be going to the county actually on Monday, we could swing by maybe and deposit that, um, with, with the clerk there, and submit the project sheet that you have, the legal, it's another legal-sized sheet that designates what it's going for, the initial escrow amount, you know, and then they're supposed to report back to us when they've accomplished that within a week. Not that it happens within a week, that they, after, within a week after it happening, they have to let us know. So you have that sheet, the project sheet?
I, I think those, the project sheets, Tara, were pretty close to what we originally looked at or were given by Kaufman County, I believe?
Um, yeah, Kaufman County kinda had the template, and I just tweaked it.
Yeah.
So, and I tried to make it where we could, as, because we're in two counties, um, you can see I put Hunt County, and, and just as, it doesn't have to be this way, but just as a point of organization, I put, um, on there H dash O-one, so that means Hunt County first project, and then on the, for Kaufman County, on the other side, it's K dash O-one for Kaufman, the first project, and...
I had no problem with it.
That's just, it doesn't have to be that way, but it just, um, and it is a point of organization. So we would fill this out and submit that, and of course, it has the cost of project, it has a start date, and it's signed by the judge, so that we're all on the same page, literally. Okay?
Let's see, Tara, I thought we'd agree that Terry, Terry Barber and, um, Randy Straight would sign rather than the judge, is that not right? When we had our meetings with them?
Um, we can certainly reach out to him and see if, I, I think, I think you're right, that's, now, that was the form that Kaufman County gave us, but that's a very good point. I think it would slow it down definitely if the judge had to sign each one, um, but I think we should reach out to each judge to make sure that they're good with that, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
That's a good point, okay, and I can do that. Okay, number eight, discuss and consider documenting and publishing the criteria for being considered in the town of poetry for the purposes of voting, trash collection, sales tax, property taxes, and other matters that will affect citizens. No, it's not Groundhog Day, it is, that was on the workshop, so... No, it's not Groundhog Day, it is, that was on the workshop, so. We, we are revisiting that, and is there anything that we, I think we've kind of already mulled that over?
Yeah, that was there just in case we needed to take action, because we can only do that on a regular agenda. So, we have Emily's memo coming from her firm. We'll review that when it's sent, and then you've agreed to send me the data, the electronic data that all worked to put together. I'm not going to publish it on Facebook, but I'll start playing around on Google Earth and all and seeing if I can bring us some tools that will help us do a better job of sort of defending our town limits and all, so. I think we're done with that one.
Okay. Number nine, discuss...
I have town comments.
Oh, I'm, eight? I don't have anybody, oh, it got out of order, that's why. That's general. Wait a minute. No, I don't have an eight. Do you have someone signed up for an eight? Here, she's been waiting and passing on all of these, the one that she wanted to talk to, I don't have...
You have Kenzie, Shelley Smith, and Patrick Smith.
I have a nine, not an eight.
Are you just missing an eight card?
I have, maybe. I have a nine card, but not an eight card.
I thought I gave them all these, I don't know why it's missing.
Oh, you know what? They stuck together.
Okay.
They stuck together. All right, come on it.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess, since that we're going to do the whole memo to the lawyers, these questions are more directed towards you, so I'm not expecting to have, you know, full answers, so. So, number one is, in the other case that you were discussing earlier with the other town, is that considered case law? Is that right? Is that how that, should I ask my questions? I don't want to use it for three minutes.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So, that's not, that's not case law. Case law would be like the opinion that's published by the judge in the district court or the appellate court or the supreme court, where it lays out the facts and then the arguments, and this is why they decided that way. That's more of just like local government precedent of my anecdote of like, yeah, Kaufman County typically lets anybody whose property touches vote. Not that we're saying that's right, but that's what's happened in our experience.
Okay. So, in that situation that you discussed, were the residents allowed to vote in all the elections? Like, was it a situation like this where in one of the elections, some of the people were not allowed to vote, and then in the other ones, they were allowed to vote?
So, we, we're just representing Grace Prairie to get them through that election, so I don't have a lot of information on what they did after. One thing that they didn't have that makes it more difficult here is that there's two counties, they just had Kaufman, so they kind of could just run with what Kaufman said because it would apply to everyone in the town, and they just did it that way. They probably didn't have those types of questions that are getting brought up based on how the town is laid out and stuff like that, or very unique here, so.
So, they were addressing this before it got to where we're at now?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mike, for putting this on the agenda. Also, could they have voted, and their voted, their votes been allowed? Like, I'm talking about us. Like, for example, the mayor told some people that they couldn't vote. Could they have done like the provisional ballots to where they did place a vote, but then it was later on reviewed to see if their vote was allowed to be counted or not, versus just go ahead and telling them straight out the gate that they couldn't vote?
I thought you were picking up the microphone and like, does he know the answer? I, I don't know exactly. I will, I'll tell you that typically smaller towns just let counties kind of run with it and say, you know, these are the people eligible based on who applied, here's your voter list, and in smaller towns, it's just not a big issue unless you have a lot of people on the border, which is the problem here. And so, typically, we follow what county says in that vein, and so here, we're having to come up with our own stances on all of these things because of the unique situations here. So, one other thing I wanted to say is, once election results have been canvassed, like, there's really no way to go back and change anything or say people should have voted or anything like that. Once they're canvassed, they're locked in, those are the verified results, so anything that we come up with now will be applied to future elections. There's not much we can do with what happened already.
Okay. So, the taxation without representation that was mentioned earlier, so since it's kind of like a too little, too late, is that what you're saying? For anything that's happened before, the people who didn't get a vote is kind of like, oh, you're bad? Is that how?
I'm just saying for any elections that have previously passed, it's not like we can come back and give you a ballot and say, hey, you know, what was your vote? We'll add it to. There's nothing we can do for elections that have come and gone. So, all we can do is, for future elections, nail down our answers on who's a resident in these different categories, and then, you know, publicize that information so you guys are all aware.
So, if there are people who did not get a vote, how exactly would that affect them since they didn't get a vote, but yet they're still having to pay these taxes?
Are you talking about like solid waste or which tax?
Yes, any of them. Property tax, solid waste tax, anything that's...
So, the only city tax is that street maintenance tax that they've adopted. There's no other city tax in place, so the other kinds of taxes are going to be dealt with at state agency levels, not the town level. That street maintenance tax is also implemented and enforced by the comptroller, so the comptroller's going to reach out to all the businesses and tell them, you know, we think you're subject to the tax, we think you're not, and that's probably going to come down to more of individual disputes if there's business owners that think they're not, they're going to have to talk to the comptroller.
Okay. And those individual disputes, would they go, you said they just go straight to the comptroller?
Yeah, because the comptroller will reach out to all the businesses, letting people know, here's the new tax, here's the effective date, you know, basically be prepared for accommodating this new tax. And so, if somebody gets that notification and thinks this doesn't apply to me, they would need to reach out, and there should be instructions in the notification from the comptroller on how to do that.
But the town wouldn't be liable for any of that kind of issues?
No, so, the town does not enforce the, the town enforces all of its ordinance in that it can write citations for violations, but the logistical enforcement of it is statutorily given to the comptroller.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Shelley Smith, did you want to speak?
Shelley Smith, 1-8730-FM-5065. I want to know, sorry, I want to know where the 311 feet starts.
From the center of the road.
Okay.
Patrick Smith?
Just questions for the attorney. Based on your discussion with Kenzie, I am inferring that the distinction about who was told they could vote and who was told they couldn't vote depended on the determination made by Hunt County versus Kaufman County. Is that correct?
So, each, like wherever the property is located, those voters, like, you guys would have had to gone to Hunt County for Hunt County voters in Poetry to come up with that list. And I think a lot of the problem is that we see that Kaufman says, if any piece touches, you're in, and that, you know, Hunt obviously was confused the day of the election, too, so I don't even know what their ultimate stance was with their attorneys. But because we're split like that, and because they didn't communicate and basically said different things, we're in the position we're in as far as that initial election. That was canvassed, those results were verified and certified, so there's nothing illegal or invalid about that process at this point. But to clear things up and so people know where they stand, I think it's important for future elections that everybody knows if they can or cannot vote and what applies to them ordinance-wise, so.
Okay, but is it fair to say it's Hunt County who said certain people shouldn't be allowed to vote on the incorporation issue, but Kaufman County took the opposite position and said, you could vote?
I believe so. I wasn't, we weren't involved with the town representing them at that point, so just in the little background, I've heard of what went on when all that was occurring, I believe that's fairly accurate. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So, if that's the truth, do you have any explanation of why my wife and I were told by the mayor, the future mayor, as Kaufman County residents, we could not vote?
So, I don't know the background of your specific situation or anything. I can look into it, but no, I don't have any.
But based on what you said, that should have only been Hunt County residents, correct?
Well, well, I think, may I speak to that?
No, ma'am. Pardon me, I'm asking for a question.
Well, you did mention my name.
Okay, well, you can talk when I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Will you state your question again? Again, I'm not totally clarified on it.
Okay, well, I thought the only issue was Hunt County took the position, if you're in the ETJ and no part of your residence touches, then you can't vote, but Kaufman did not take that position.
I believe so. I wasn't involved at all, so I don't want to lead you down a path, but I believe that's generally accurate.
Okay. So, based on that, my wife and I shouldn't have gotten a text message from the future mayor of Poetry telling us, Kaufman County residents, we're not allowed to vote?
Well, I don't know where your property is on a map to speak to it.
It's in Kaufman County, ma'am, Kaufman County.
But in terms of town boundaries, and then, we can talk about this just separately outside of the meeting, too, to gain...
But you can't answer that tonight, can you?
Okay, so, as the town attorney, I don't make the voter lists, and then my firm specifically was not involved at all when the town was incorporating, so I, there's very little I can speak on, but to tell you some of your concerns I've heard also, and that's what we're trying to fix now by bringing them to the table.
Okay, thank you. And did the mayor want to add anything?
Well, I was specifically asked by your wife about the vote, and so I did respond in a text message. My understanding was basically from what our legal representation, Jim Shepherd told us, was that if your house is beyond that 311 feet, you do not get to vote, and that's in either county. He was our representation at the time, it didn't matter. And it made me very sad because there were some people who I really, you know, cared about, didn't, and, and of course, that was his position, okay? And he was our legal counsel at the time.
But ma'am, isn't it true, whether it's Hunt County or Kaufman County, some people that live beyond that 311 feet, they were allowed to vote?
And that is not in my purview. That's, okay, that is the elections department's purview, that is not my purview, and I wasn't even there at the time, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I feel badly that some people did not get to vote, but that, again, that was out of my hands. That was not, that was not in my purview.
So, on eight, should we table it until we get the memo back?
I think that was the consensus.
Yeah, no, we take no motion, no action on it. Leave it.
Okay.
It's not a table, okay.
Okay, so moving on. Number nine. Discuss and consider posting a list of registered voters in Hunt and Kaufman Counties that reside within the town limits on the town website. So, this was in response to our counsel, who said that the residence, residency is often determined by registered, or voters in that area, and it can help assist in some of the questions that we're now asking. So, we do, I did request, I do have the list of registered voters for Hunt County, I'm still waiting to get the list for Kaufman County. So, that might help clear up some of the confusion if we just put that list out. Now, granted, on the list that I received from, at least from Hunt County, it does have some other information that I would think it'd be inappropriate, like date of birth. I certainly wouldn't want to put that out there, but maybe a name, an address, and I think that's why it's here on this agenda item, is what information, now this had, like, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and it had numerous columns, much of it would be unnecessary, and so just, you know, deleting most of that, but giving the name and the address maybe would be appropriate, but that's for the council to decide.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's our job to proof the voter roll, but again, it is public information, so people can go find it if they want, but it would be nice to, I mean, we don't need to be like every other town, we've already established that, and I think as a service to our citizens to say, hey, if you're one of our Kaufman folks, go check out the list and kind of put people in charge of, because one of the responses we got when we published the two lists the last time was, oh my gosh, they got me at this old address, or they got my maiden name, or they got, you know, I think most of us don't think about keeping our voter registration emails and whatever up to date, we're just glad we can vote. So, I think just kind of as an added service, it wouldn't cost us a lot. We can, like you say, you can collapse all those other columns and just show the name, address, and whatever, and let people look at it.
I think it would be a good service.
I think so, too, and I think we should also add, how do you reach out to the election office to get the information updated, so that it's not just the wrong?
Right, so proactively, so if you see an error, if it's your old residence, like he was alluding to, then, then they can fix that, and we can be a team with them, and...
Well, and I think to the point of the citizens it spoke, we want to make a good-faith effort to include people in the process correctly, right? We can't correct the errors of the past, but as Emily said, we can certainly correct going forward, and I think this would go a long ways, in my mind at least, towards, hey, we're going to try, okay? We realize there was some confusion, this will help, because the poor elections people and judge, I mean, they, they got bad data, they got bad data, you know, they, okay, so I make a motion, we post this on the website. Do we have citizen comments?
Number nine. Okay, so, Kenzie?
Okay, so, this is mainly for, I want to make sure that I understand how the original voter roll was obtained. So, earlier, the mayor said that the incorporation lawyer and the election board came up with that original voter list. Is that correct? Isn't that what you said a minute ago?
Well, I know the, yes, that is what I said.
Okay. And then a minute ago, or a little bit after that, you said that the survey had to be turned in with a voter roll. So, wasn't the survey done before the incorporation lawyer and the election board got together?
I'm not sure I'm following you, because it was like a nine-month process, so it was very long, so...
But there is only one voter roll during that whole time period?
Okay, so, the one at hand is the current voter roll. I don't know that we can go back to that one.
I know, but that's the one I'm asking about, because...
Okay, that's not on the agenda.
I want to know, yeah, because we want to know about the incorporation, like, I know it's passed, but...
Okay, this is not on the agenda. I'm sorry, Kenzie. Can you talk to me afterward, though? I'll be happy to answer any questions afterward. This is not the agenda item.
I'm pretty sure that the voter roll was discussed, and that was on the agenda.
No, it's from November, the November. I asked for the most current voter roll from November.
Okay, the voter roll that she discussed on the agenda previously or on the workshop, that's open act, right? Like, we can request that?
So, workshop items cannot be discussed in a council meeting? Are you talking about...
Okay, but the voter roll that was discussed, we can request that, right? What they had in the incorporation?
Yeah, just send an email to the city secretary, you can request it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You better hurry, she's leaving.
Okay, Shelley? Shelley Smith? Please keep it, your comments, we're trying to get out of here, to the current voter roll. It is the current voter roll, is, the agenda item is to post the current, the registered voters in Hunt and Kaufman Counties that reside within the town limits on the website.
So, if I ask, how did you come up with the original list that was online back before we incorporated that I can't ask back?
That is not the agenda item.
It doesn't say current.
But it's, that's not the agenda item. You can talk to me afterward, though.
Okay, so, the map that had the dots with the houses, where the houses...
Okay, you're out of order. I'm sorry, this is not the agenda item. Please talk to me afterward, though, okay? All right, so, Patrick? Okay. Number 10. All right, we need to vote on this. So, we have a motion, and we have a motion, I think we had some interest in that. Okay, that's been seconded by Vincent. We have a motion made and seconded by Vincent to post the registered voters in Hunt and Kaufman Counties that reside within the town limits on the town website. All those in favor?
Who made that motion?
Jaffe. And that passes unanimously.
Is, so is the assumption you're going to do that, or do we need to delegate somebody?
Well, I have the list, I can go through and take off the date of birth and all the other extraneous information that's not pertinent, and send that off. I don't know if our secretary wants to tackle that or not. She's been learning the Wix website and posting things, so maybe that's her last hurrah effort. Okay, so, number 10. Discuss and consider developing a plan to create and publish a comprehensive map using the incorporation survey to show all property parcels within the Town of Poetry and its ETJ, including a list of parcels, owners, and whether the property is within the town limits.
Okay, so again, that's mine from the workshop, so my recommendation would be we take no action on that now. You're going to forward me the data, I'll start putting some things together on a map, bring them back to the council. If it's a value, we'll use it, if not, we'll do something different.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we had a, number 10, okay. Okay, so, Kenzie, Shelley, Patrick, on number, on number 10?
I would like to know why there was no comprehensive plan done before we incorporated.
Okay, that's not the agenda item, you're out of order.
Discuss and consider developing a plan.
Okay, that's not the same.
We're discussing the plan.
Okay, again, we can talk about this later. That's not the agenda item. All right, Patrick? Okay, all right, so, any other, I think that you said there's no action, I will forward the data, number, now, there was a mistype, so it says 13, but it's actually 11. 11, discuss and consider developing a plan to audit and enforce the town's solid waste ordinance, including a template cease and desist letter to send to violators. Is there an action plan for that?
Do we need a motion, Emily, to request that memo, or?
No, I was just going to tell you guys if you wanted to just make direction to me, but I know what I need to do and bring back to you guys next time.
Well, that's fine, let's put it in the record, though, because that way we've got a paper trail, so I make a motion that we request our legal counsel to provide us with a residency memo.
Yep.
Establishing the terms of residency in the town of Poetry.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded by White.
Citizen comments?
Number 11. Kenzie, you're waving off, okay? Patrick and Shelley?
Number 11.
Number 11, which was typed 13, but it's actually 11. It's developing a plan to audit and enforce the town's solid waste ordinance. Patrick? Okay, all right, so, we have a motion by Jaffe, and it's been seconded by White to.
Hang on, pull that back, so I guess I'm reading across things, so that one was for the solid waste cease and desist letter, not the residency.
That residency memo is going to come alongside, I think a cease and desist is fine to do as well, so I can bring them both back next meeting.
Okay, do we even really have to have a motion for that?
Well, I think it just creates a, we can show good faith that we requested, we're making an effort to correct, clarify, whatever, so.
We do have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, all those in favor? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Number 12, discuss and consider designating certain town roads as non-hazardous waste routes.
I asked this to be put on the agenda, because I've had citizens ask for it to be added to the agenda, and I did discuss with council, and we can designate our town roads, but, you know, as far as 1565, 986, 3486, we're not able to designate state roads, but, you know, that's, that's their domain. So, you know, we could review and see what, what we can do, I'm more than happy to do that, but, you know, the main concern of the person who expressed it to me was the state roads, so that was why I specifically asked about them, and that's, there's not a whole lot we can do about those.
So, what, for my benefit, Brian, what's the concern? Are they concerned that people are hauling hazardous waste up and down the roads?
Yeah, and they would, they wanted to see if we could stop it, and we can on the surface roads, but we can't on the made thoroughfares.
Yeah, it sounds like they need to appeal to the state or somebody, DOT or something.
This is really a two-part deal. Hazardous have routes that are given to them, so, so I think probably the concern would be the fuel trucks and stuff like that, maybe, and yeah, we're not going to have any.
I was going to say, don't outlaw propane, or I'm going to freeze to death.
And, you know, there's a general understanding that we're, even as a town, we're not able to impact state commerce, you know, so there's only so much that we can do.
Would you like to speak to that?
Debbie Emmerich couldn't make it tonight, and she called me when I was walking in and asked if I would read this for her. Her address is 9499 County Road 2432. She says, since 3486 was paved, trucks cutting back and forth from Highway 80 and I-20 to I-30, Poetry has become a major truck route. If town council could try to stop hazardous chemicals from going through Poetry for safety for our residents, school, churches, right on the roads they drive down. They have already had one diesel truck turnover and a dump truck. They drive over speed limit, pass on curves and solid stripes. Let's protect our town from hazardous chemical wrecks. Many cities have roads that chemical trucks are not allowed. They didn't come this way before 3486 was paved. Thank you for looking into this issue. Debbie Emmerich.
Thank you, Debbie.
You know, I remember years ago when there was concern over the sand pit and the haulers and things, that some of the various people of the town, or that lived out here, got together with DPS and others, and they did extra enforcement. To me, the quickest way would be to get some, you know, appeal to our folks at Hunt County and Kaufman County, and get them to come out and just enforce the rules, because I agree with that, I mean, it's like a petroleum thoroughfare up and down 1565 now, I can't even count the number of 18-wheelers full of fuel. I guess it's because somebody said it's the fuel farm at Caddo, and they're trying to get to their delivery places over in Terrell, but there's a lot of 18-wheelers running up and down this road the last few months.
Well, certainly, and this kind of plays into what we were talking about earlier, about, you know, trucks, can we limit trucks on certain roads? I mean, I'm looking at this map, and we've got some roads that are used as a pass-through, like this one right here, and it's not meant for that. Here, you've, you know, you've got your state road here, and you've got your state road kept road here, but this road is also, 2434, is often used as a pass-through, and so I'm wondering if we could possibly put signs here at the entrance of each of those, at least, and maybe there's some others that we need to look at to protect our citizens in a better way from all of that pass-through traffic.
Well, I've got to imagine if the truckers started labeling this as a speed trap or whatever, they'd go a different route, because they just don't want that, they don't want to be checked and tested and weighed and whatever, so if we just can work with our local, we have a lot of DPS people that live in Poetry, I mean, quite a few, and Hunt County is friendly to us, so I think we should maybe consider reaching out to them and just saying, hey, we need a little extra enforcement, can you guys drop by everyone's?
And what they say to me is, we need to come up with our own road signs that say XYZ.
Well, I would, I would ask them to just enforce the speed limit, would be a great start, I mean, 1565 is like the salt flats. I mean, it's, 80 is not even a keep-up speed down through the bottoms on some days, so.
And a lot of the officers do have like 300 miles to cover, so unless we come up with, you know, an assigned day or hours per week, I don't know that that's going to be happening on a regular basis.
I, several years ago, I asked the sheriff, recalled, and asked about, very similar question, it's number 12, hazardous waste issues and the trucks, and I was told, they pay their taxes, they can drive on the roads. And so, I was told, there's nothing you can do. Now, we can put up signs, but they're suggestions, as much as anything, I don't think they're enforceable, at least that's what I was told. That's probably been seven, eight years ago, but I don't know that anything's changed. Emily, you may know.
Emily, can you speak to that, please?
So, it depends, like when, mayor, when you've talked to county and they say the city needs their own roads, are they talking about just town roads, or are they saying, like, city signs on county roads?
They have told, they have told me, yes, that we need our own city signs on the roads.
Including county roads?
Right, because we have 26, well, if you take out the state-kept roads, I'm not sure how many it is, but 26 miles less the state-kept roads, which is significant, I mean, FM 1565 is state-kept, and then 986 is also state-kept, so.
That is a little surprising to me, I can see the county saying that for purely town roads, but I don't know why they would expect the town to provide signs for county roads.
But those are in our jurisdiction, the ones.
The general consensus from the counties has been that once we incorporated, those county roads became town roads.
Oh, I think we had a, mayor, you may have asked me this, if there was something formal we needed to do to get, Patricia might have had this, we've had a lot of annexations lately, and one question that's coming up is, there's this general thought, once you incorporate or somebody annexes in, the roads come to, and does the council need to ever take formal action to evidence its ownership over the roads, which would be the signs? So, we probably need a resolution or a policy on how we're going to transition into, you know, these are now in our jurisdiction, how are we going to maintain them, what kind of signs are we typically going to use on these? We need to come up with a plan of attack for that.
And there might, I mean, maybe there needs to be a subcommittee, or.
That would be a good idea, yeah.
To kind of look at each road, case by case, to see, okay, is this having significant issues? Does it need, does it need a know-through truck sign? Does it need something in particular?
I think that would be super helpful.
I've heard, I've heard probably my number one complaint has been about speedsters on 249 and 2458, and then also, they're passing, they're cutting through on these other county roads that pass, they're cutting through, and it's creating a lot of traffic, and they're concerned.
That means the road crews are doing a good job, because now they're starting to not complain about the potholes, and now they're talking about the speed.
Thanks, Kevin, you fixed the roads, now they're going faster.
Emily, would that need to be an agenda item in order to set up a subcommittee?
Let me read how we had that last one. To be totally above board, yeah, I would say let's bring this back to form a committee on the next agenda, based on how the wording on that last item is.
Okay? We can do that. Kenzie, did you want to speak to this? She's passing, okay? All right, general comments, Kenzie, did you want to have a general comment? Kevin, pass, Glenn Strauss, pass, okay? The time is 10:04, and meeting is adjourned.